Have everybody introduce themselves. I guess we'll, I'm Mayor Glaze and we'll just go around this table and then into the audience. If y'all could introduce yourselves. So I'm Mayor Glaze, Catherine Glaze.
I'm Mike McClellan, council member. Sam Houston Clinton III, city council member.
Nicholas Styler, council member.
Agent Flotis, city employee.
Jared Anvil, city administrator.
I'm Gary Merritt, the Great Springs Project.
Mary Smith Harper, library.
Library board member.
Bill Glaze.
I'm John Batros with Exports Wildlife, but we're just here to just listen.
Oh.
Well, thanks for coming, bud. Thanks for coming, Jack. Appreciate it.
Commissioner.
I'm Ken Chario, I'm commissioner of Precinct Three.
I'm Clay Forster, I'm Guadalupe County here. I was asked to come to this meeting probably to join our friends from Exports Wildlife. We've been here.
Okay.
Steve White, another copy seed run.
David.
And I'm Michelle Rumbow, I'm his wife. And also in case Drew Engeltke comes in after this, after we get going, also we're letting you go on with the county. He's our county.
I'm Robert Moreno, I'm Martindale citizen.
I'm Clint, I'm a.
River.
Hey Tom, your board man, come on.
I'm Better Ann Paul.
And then Matthew McGovern, I'm just a citizen.
And thank you all for giving up your Saturday morning to come and discuss these important issues. We're going to start with Gary Merritt. And we went last September, Mike McClellan and I and Sam and I think Sonia to the Mermaid Symposium. And that's where we heard you speak about the trails. And we were really excited. We'd like to have a trail go from San Marcos out to Martindale. So.
Well, I just wanted to say one thing, we had one other person come in while we were.
Recognize.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Virginia.
I'm Virginia Parker with the River Foundation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mayor and everyone. Thanks for being here and talking about Great Springs Project for just a few minutes. But what I really want to be is just a resource, answer questions or give you my viewpoint. I know a few people in the room and I don't think anyone would be surprised that I'd be very happy to give you my opinion about things. So just take that for what it's worth. It was really nice to meet y'all at that San Marcos event. And when I talk about Great Springs Project, a lot of what I'm going to be talking about, our work is along the recharge zone of the Edwards Aquifer. So we're mainly west of I-35. But what I think we can talk about today is how does the principles and the way that we work apply to the things that y'all are going to be thinking about and talking about here. But let's, please make this a conversation. If you have questions or you want to talk about something while I'm talking, let's just talk about it right there. I've got a long slide that there, I'm not going to go through it all, but I'll make that available to y'all if y'all want to look at that or share it, talk more about Great Springs Project. But if we could just, am I doing it? Adrian, do it though. Okay, let's go to the next one. I'd say one of the, so we're a nonprofit, we're 501(c)(3). We were formed for the specific purpose of this mission that's on the screen right there, connecting this 100-plus mile network of trails from Austin to San Antonio. We say from the Alamo to the Capitol, we always go south to north. So San Antonio to Austin. And then to do land conservation projects that are focused on those four springs, so over the recharge zone of the Edwards. So if you think about I-35, you go from I-35 west about 30 or 35 miles, that's our area of San Antonio to Austin. And we do that because we wanted to, there were people that wanted an organization that provided that kind of trail recreational opportunities, did the land conservation, but especially to bring attention to the place itself, to help people to understand why this particular place, protecting the recharge features of the Edwards Aquifer are so important. Important to the springs, important to the rivers, important to this river that's right here. So we work with cities and counties and river authorities and real estate developers and nonprofits on whatever trail is being built in the corridor. And I'll talk about a trail plan here in just a minute, how we put that together. And we work on connecting the projects and people and places. And then on the land conservation side, we, we have mapping of our corridor and we look at everything down to just each land parcel. So there are in that corridor, San Antonio to Austin, over the recharge zone of the Edwards Aquifer. There, we looked at the number of land parcels that are 50 acres or more and there are around 1,400 of those. And we're out there talking with those landlords, actually just knocking on doors and calling them or asking our neighbors to ask them, you know, what is your interest in conservation in this area because of the resources themselves? So for y'all here, hopefully you're thinking about that, you know, the resources here, the river, yes, but the drainage into the river and open spaces all contribute to that. And by Virginia's here, they can talk much better than I can about the natural features that will support the protection of the river itself. So Adrian, if we could just, this will be super fascinating to y'all, but I won't go into this anymore. We can just roll through a few more. Let me keep going there. So this one, this slide could be y'all's slide certainly, right? So I was in Lockhart yesterday and I drove the back thing here and I'm running around Martindale. And wow, there's a lot happening, right? And y'all are experiencing that too. We need with a number of people that are being born in Texas and moving to Texas, we definitely need more housing and we need more places for people to live and to work. But we also need to work really hard to protect the things that make Texas and central Texas great and to protect the resources like the springs and the river and the open space as much as we can. And that, and those things can coexist. And so one of the things that we do at Great Springs Project and SMURF and others do is to try to apply the same principles of, yes, we need infrastructure that's gray and brown and we need infrastructure that's green and whatever the color of crushed granite is for trails. It's this is the same importance of infrastructure. We can go through a couple more and see what else we have here and keep going. Let me just talk about the trail plan. Let me move to that. And if you can go through a couple more, let's see. Let me pause right here. So this is, is the way that we have formalized the building out the trail alignments and figuring out where you could actually connect, to connect 100-plus mile trail right in the middle of where all of the, there's so much development that's happening, especially in Hayes County, especially in Comal County, in our work area. You're experiencing the same thing every direction from right here. We put the steering committee together and we wanted people from, as I said before, the cities, the counties, all three of the river authorities in our area are represented in that steering committee, other nonprofits. And that group got together and they started to, they, we had, we hired a vendor, Alter Planning and Design, that's done some regional trails around the country. And we asked the group, and we participated actively in it, let's look at all the plans that we could find that included trails in some way. And so you think about a city plan, a parks plan, and it talks about trails, the city transportation plans, county thoroughfare plans, real estate plans. The Campo has plans and on and on and on. And they, they found an inventory of 45 plus of those. Okay, so those are plans that are in existence that included trails in some way. Now, but of those, we've all been involved with plans that you do a great plan and it looks beautiful and it gets put on a desk and that person leaves and the next person, it's not their priority. And so it just sits there. So we got to ask this group, now let's work through the plans and see what of these trails that are included in the plans are really viable. What are you really working on, city of New Braunfels, so you have San Marcos? And then let's sort that out. And so from that, we developed the actual alignments of things that are on the ground now, things that are in the short term, or things that we at Great Springs Project could work on finding the right way for to connect these things. So with, from that, then we put the trails plan together. And that's on our website, I encourage anyone to look at it, not so much for what it is, but I would just say for what it could be here. That would be the, I think, the real value for this group is to say, this is a product that is done at a certain level and we can visualize how that kind of process could be a benefit here of bringing people together, sorting through priorities, figuring out alignments. Because trails, if we could do a couple more, Adrian, let's see what else I've got there. And keep going, keep going. Let me pause right there. So the, having things in plans is incredibly important because from there it gets pulled into other plans. So we've looked for other plans of this Alamo to the Capitol and TechStop had a couple of them where they worked on that. And those, that first one up there, that bicycle tourism trail route is statewide. And so it's going to touch on some things that are out here. But once you're, you have a plan and you work to get your plan into other plans, well then it just can feed on itself because eventually you move from a plan to a project, but the in-between is money. And you only get to the money if you have something that you've got a group of people together that are agreed on, that gets replicated in, in other places. Okay, so if we can go to a couple more, we can keep going. And pause right here for a second. So the money piece, this is one of the things that we do at Great Springs Project, is when we work with our partners, our project partners, whether it's, it's a city, it could be, it could be Texas State University, it could be a real estate developer that has, is doing a subdivision that's going to have a trail through it that needs to connect to something. And as long as that trail is publicly accessible and it connects things, we're interested in that, right? And so we look at all the sources of money that you could put, bring together for projects. And those are a lot of them that we, but there are some others as well. And then we help, if a city needs help writing a grant application for a Parks and Wildlife recreational trails grant, then we can help with that. If, if there's an opportunity for, the Texas Water Development Board has Clean Water State Revolving Fund, money that is, can be used for open space protection. For a particular piece of property where the protection of that, for the not having it be rooftops would be really important to the water quality. There's money available to Water Development Board for that, we help do that. And that can be a part. So that's, you can do more than one thing. If there's an area that, where if you kept it as open space, it would help your drainage situation, right? If we can, the funding for that is on that screen there. We got to connect money and projects. And then Adrian, if we can go forward a little bit. So that's, bring back up, so again, our trust plan is on the website, I encourage anyone to look at that. And to, and to think about those three things on the right, and I had this conversation yesterday, where trails are important for lots of reasons. But the things that trails do is they connect a place to a place. And so when you're thinking about the trails interested or here, there's reasons for trails, whether it's, because people want those for quality of life. They want places to be outside and to be able to be safe and to recreate for their physical health, mental health, for workforce development. I'm a business oriented sort of person and so I love the idea of the natural resources like rivers and parks and trails, supporting business communities that support those things. Like I like to drink here and I especially like to drink here where I can ride my mountain bike, where I can walk outside from there. And I may not want to hold a beer and walk on a trail, but I like the idea of holding a beer and watching other people on a trail. Because that's, and then that fits certain communities. And I, looking out here, it's going to fit this community, right? So trails need to go places and our trail plan talks about that. All right, I'm going to go faster because I've been talking for a long time. So for us, we took the 100-mile trail and we broke it into segments. So because our, our job is not to plan a trail, our job is to build the trail or get the trail built. And so getting from the plan to project implementation, like the way to eat an entire elephant is one bite at a time. So we have these 15 different segments and we are always working on trying to figure out how to make sure we've got the right way and the right project partners and the right funding sources to get trail built. To get a 100-mile trail built, fully connected from San Antonio to Austin, there's about 30, 35 miles of that trail that are already on the ground. About 30 miles of it are in short-term plans and that leaves about 30 miles of it that we're, we have to get the right way forward to build. But we have to get trails straight, built on the ground, six to 10 miles of trail a year for the next 10 years. So we have to get after it and we do. And that's, this is our approach to it. If we could do it just a couple more. So this is in the trails plan, there's always a question, what does the trail look like? And so I would just refer you to the, to the trails plan for some ideas of that, the trail matches. And the trail looks like what it needs to look like in the place that it is. So in some places, it should be a natural surface trail. In other places, hard top is going to be better because of the topography or the drainage or the resource that you're trying to protect with the trail. But we call all that out in our trails plan. And then a couple more. And then these are maps just to show you what trail alignment maps can look like. And so if you, you'll see that the actual plan, that different segments of the trail came, came from. So we call those out on there, if you can go to one more. And then in the middle of that screen, there is a green line that has arrows on it, and we call that out as a corridor because that's where our job now is to talk with landlords along in there to figure out where we can actually acquire right of way to connect a plan on the right and a planned trail on the left. And that's our job, Great Springs Project, in the case of the San Antonio to Austin Trail. And, and so those are all in that trail plan. We also say this is a living, breathing document, it's constantly being updated. We still have that steering committee together, we're still meeting. And so as a new trail comes on or a city changes something or a real estate developer is developing a project and somewhere in there, it will change the alignment somewhat. And so we're going to go back with that steering committee, we'll update these maps from the trail plan. But within, say, a month after we released that in last April, there were already enough changes in it that, you know, we have another set of plans that we're working on that will eventually be on the online version. And then we've got those, those maps all the way from San Antonio to Austin. Go to a couple more. Okay, this is what I want to leave with, is this, there's almost never a no.
Never a no.
Almost never a no. So there's, there's, if, if we think creatively and we think about the resource and we think about what the need is and we think about what people really want, almost always, we can find a way to make it happen. So this is just representative of a very tight space that serves a lot of different purposes, from recreation to transportation. This is, this is in San Antonio, along Wetmore Road. This is a project that would be part of our alignments and so we're promoting as a project, shopping it to the city that does not exist now, exists now, but, but a lot of people are getting behind this idea of connecting from the, from downtown by the airport up to two big parks that are in North San Antonio, McAllister and Hardburger Park, using road adjacent trails slash linear park, just like that.
And was that the high school in San Marcos that was on the previous slide?
Yeah.
Yeah, it shows the high school down, what is that high school? I can't.
Oh no, that's, that's, we're in a segment, we're in a different segment.
Yes.
D, it might be where, where we see our. Do we have it on? I'm not sure.
Cause I know San Marcos had a meeting a week or two ago about a second city center. It's going to be close to the high school. And that would, you know, we could possibly have a trail that would come from the high school area out here.
That would be amazing.
Yeah.
But, you know, I was, when I was in Lockhart.
Yeah, go ahead and put that.
I was looking from, from the city to where the state park is and it goes right by, there's a trail that goes from sort of the city downtown to the, to the high school and then it stops. But it's only a mile and a half from Lockhart, from there where that trail stops to the state park. So you think about a trail going somewhere, there's a state park resource being able to connect it to downtown, the city, and but there's that.
This, this is the map, I'm sorry, this is the map I pulled off of the 200-page plan. It looks like this is a different segment than what we're showing before. So this is the one near, closer to where we are in San Marcos.
Gary, you're the expert and I'll leave, everybody in here is an expert in their field. You know, the proposal that we came up with, Colliery Creek, if, I don't know if we can push that, put that on the screen real quick. The Colliery Creek, Adrian, put that up real quick. And I'll tell you, Adrian and myself and Sam, we, we sat here and got on the, got on the maps here. And that's Colliery Creek that goes from, from I-35, which is San Marcos Parks. And I'm an avid hiker, I don't like, I don't like dealing with cars, you know? I like to do rural and natural setting. But that would be, in your opinion, would that be a viable way to go since that's a creek bed, in your opinion?
So creek beds are an amazing place to build trails, for all the reasons. One of them is because there's often good reason for the private landlords that own property along creeks to, to not build in those areas with rooftops. But it's still usable land and valuable land. And you can use trails and parks to protect, as a resource protection tool. You don't have St. Augustine lawns going straight down to a creek, lots of great reasons why we don't want that. So creeks, linear creeks are phenomenal. I would say like the San Antonio park system or trail system is built mainly on their linear creeks to the city of San Antonio. So anytime you see a natural feature like that, your eyes go to it, absolutely. But kind of the next steps are to break it down and to see what the opportunity is and are there enough, is there enough landowner engagement opportunity to say yes to that?
I do have one, she's expressed interest in San Marcos River Ranch and she owns a big chunk. And she's all, she's all on board. And like for example, I won't say much, but if you come over there, Western Field Crossing, if you could possibly even cut over onto the Blanco River and you could literally go from San Marcos to Martindale and the only place you'd have a paved road would be, a little bit on Western Field, we cross the river and right there, Old Martindale Road, Blanco River crosses, you could, about a mile, you'd be at the San Marcos Parks. I mean, but that's what we came up with and that creek parallels the river, so I just wanted your opinion on that.
Yeah, I mean, this is where your eyes first go to those, the features exactly like this one right here.
And we got one, Guadalupe County here, that's in y'all's backyard. So, Adrian, I'm sorry, okay, there's.
Take me a little way.
Well, that's all right, that's why I wanted the county here, because we got Caldwell County here also. But I mean, that would be, I can say it's all creek land and flood, so that's, just let you continue, sir.
No, that, that was really where I, I wanted to just leave it with y'all that talking together, thinking about what's possible, not what's probable, but what's possible. I would start with that and, and be aspirational, not to, not to have pie in the sky visions, but you've got to set an aspiration because you can do the planning, you can get people together, you can think about the why. And, and what I really like about Great Springs Project and what I really like about parks and trails from a community up is that it's a place for people to say yes. And there are lots of reasons that people will be interested in a defined, connected park and trail system because it benefits everybody in their own way that's of interest to them. And, and so it's just a place that people can really join together and, and work together.
Well, real quick, you made a point that most people, most, your development, most developments, landowners, real estate, a lot of them are for this type of project.
Yeah, so here's the, the question is, is can you get to the conversation when you're still at some kind of a macro scale? That's, that's really key because not every landowner wants a trail in their backyard and we've just got to be real about that. And people, because we talk with landowners about right of way and the people are concerned about the same things, right? But they're concerned about safety, they're concerned about people leaving the trail corridor and going to somewhere else on their property, about littering. And people want to live out in the country so that they're away from people and I completely get all of that. But there are also people that recognize that trails are fun and cool and they want to be, do what we say, which is step out of your, your house and get on the trail that goes somewhere that they want to go. Some people see the economic opportunity in them. And, and so it's not every landowner that says yes, but when you get to, if you still have an opportunity to get to scale, whether it's a development that's coming in or open space or a transportation project, you know, if there's a farm-to-market road that's going to be expanded, that's the very best time to go.
If you had much luck with like a creek type of this situation, have you had much luck with landowners to eventually have them to go this route? Since it's on a roadway and sit in their backyard, have you had any, I mean, is it, is it more difficult?
It, it's more difficult because you have more.
More landowners.
More landowners. But I'll use Dryco Mount Creek in New Braunfels as an example.
There you go.
Where the city has, has been working with landowners and on developing trail along the Dryco Mall from land to parks all the way, you know, out. And so we're, they've done the first section of that, they're starting phase two of that. We were engaged, we work with the city on talking with those landowners and, you know, we've got a yes, we've got a probable, we've got maybe, we've got to come back to me when those people say yes. And we're just chipping away at it.
So that's, that's a prime example for our little town.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's exactly what they're doing.
It is, and I'll also say that from a planning perspective, if you look at the city of New Braunfels website, they have the master plan for that Dryco Mount Creek trail on their website. And it's pretty interesting because it is a lot of, about a few small, I mean, the people houses with their backyard on the creek. But it's there and it's really well done as well.
Now, is that all in the city limits? That's for that creek.
The first two phases of it are.
So that's, that's the main, biggest problem we have, it's always been our problem. We got two counties and we got two different cities, we got city limits, that's, that's the major problem we run into to get those. Right, like today, I'm amazed as many people showed up, to get everybody together for a common cause.
Well, imagine, when you're in the city limits, people are less likely or more likely to say yes because they don't mind being around people. You go out around that river, it's going to be a lot harder to convince somebody, hey, I want to put, I want. I want to put a trail through with your creek if that's okay.
Well, this is what.
Get on out of here.
Well, real quick, the reason I picked that creek is most riverfront landowners are not like the, the San Marcos River Ranch, they're not going to go for a trail next to the river. I mean, that's not going to happen. But a creek that's out of their subdivision, uh, yeah, I mean, I think they'd do it, but that particular.
Yeah, it's about, it's around development, yeah.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we, so the River Foundation, um, we have to sign this like ASAP, but we just got a trail grant from Parks and Wildlife and it's a $200,000 trail grant. We're actually building it in Purgatory Creek to connect two places in the city of San Marcos. That's money y'all can go after. And I would recommend, like, right now I'm in conversations with the smart terminal in Caldwell County. And between the smart terminal, which most people aren't going to walk, want to walk by it and heavy industrial, however, some people, that's going to be their mode of transportation to get from Martindale to San Marcos. So between the smart terminal and the Cotton Center slash Walton Group, that's like 90% of the way there. So you talk to those two developers and I'm happy to talk to them. You've got a trail in Caldwell County that they can just include when they're putting sidewalks in, easy. And none of that has been built yet, so that's a huge opportunity in Caldwell County. On the Guadalupe County side, you've got the Mayan and HK Realty. HK's went for very.
There you go, that's, that is the Mayan right there, that's HK.
But I wouldn't cross the Blanco, I'd stay, I'd stay on.
Whatever, but that is, that is the Mayan and HK, that goes to their property right now, those two. You can see the 110 coming through there and that goes right in the, that's the headwaters, that pond is the headwaters of Colli Creek. And that property right there, that would be somebody to reach out to because those, those haven't been developed yet. So, go ahead.
So we're talking about city and county. One of the things that cities can do is, is if you have trails planned, you've adopted or as part of your parks plan, then you can include it with that, an ordinance that says here's the, where the trail is going to be. And so when someone, a landlord comes to us with a request for a zoning change or a development agreement for that property, one of the conditions is the, the trail gets built there. Just like with, if you're going to do sidewalks or water extensions, it's that same thing, you can do trails that way. Counties don't have that authority, but they, they do, are heavily involved in transportation. And so like you think about Dryco Mount Creek from New Braunfels, when we get out of the city limits, there we're working with the county commissioners on some funding sources to do, not necessarily, probably won't be soft surface trail, it'll be more transportation-oriented trail. So hard top, shared use path with the wide sidewalk that's next to a road that's been improved along that because as Virginia was saying about here, there are people that live out in a county, a, a family, however many, that has one car. And so dad takes, or somebody takes the car in the morning to go to work and the kid's trying to get to school and mom's trying to get somewhere else. And so we can look for transportation funds for at least part of that. I'm not saying that that's the case here, I'm just saying that city has got some things in their tools, get the county does as well.
Okay.
Did you finish your?
Um, I mean, I would like to see the line, like if you're thinking pie in the sky, like Gary recommended, I like your idea of going over to the school because, um, like the second city center, San Marcos really is leaning heavily on that. And so, you know, HK and the Mayan gets you a very large percentage of that avenue. And so I, I would like to see a lot of this happen and I'm excited about this presentation, honestly.
As you all have established these trail corridors through some of the, some of these more rural unincorporated areas, who's made, how many of you come from maintenance in those areas?
Yeah, so in, in our case, we have taken on that responsibility. For us, the Great Springs Project, say, here are the gaps. And so we're going to acquire the right of way. If, if the county wants to take it on as part of their trails and plan or project, great. If the city expands and they, you know, become part of their ETJ or the city limits, great. But outside of that, we're standing up as the consultancy for those sections of it. And, you know, hoping, well, the city's going to grow and they'll eventually absorb it. And so that's been one thing that has really brought together, you know, us standing in the gap there. And, and I would say that for here, that's something to think about is, you know, is there an organization or a bridge or what can happen? You know, given, who can help to?
In San Marcos, I, I go out and help every once in a while, but there's the Green Bell Alliance. Todd Durkis.
So good.
Yeah, he's awesome.
Yeah.
I love working with him, but he was, he, he foaming at the mouth of you, is that this?
So, so good, and for natural surface trails, like what you're looking at there?
And that, to me, is what we really need. I mean, because I'm a nature guy and I don't like walking. I mean, we could have multiple systems for transportation, maybe with a smart terminal, but personally, I don't want to walk a highway, you know?
I mean.
But, but I was back to the point with this creek, how, how do you, do you put up like a barriers, like fencing or anything to keep people to stay on the, like the, that creek? You, you keep them in that corridor, how do you, how do y'all usually do that? You have signs or?
Both, so.
Fencing or blocking or?
It depends on the, the property itself, what it is. You know, does topography keep people, if people don't like to walk uphill? And so, you know, is there a slope, it's much less likely somebody's going to wander uphill somewhere or bluff. But if it's flat property and they can see a house, you know, there's probably going to be some fencing in there somewhere.
Next question.
That'd have to be, you know, something they've got to step over usually is.
Next, next question, we all pay property tax. Is there any, that, do people get any breaks in their property tax with, if they, if they, you know, let a trail go through their property, is there any type of, if you run across it?
Yeah, so they would get the value of the donated easement. I mean, that has value, they're donating a property interest to the city or the county, you know? So they would get that. And then it would, you couldn't say how mu, I can't sit here and say how much depends on the property, but, but they would have less property to be taxed because part of it they give away, in a way, but even if it was an easement.
So, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to say huge, but you can.
It, it's a huge, it's a huge tax benefit, like we hold an easement, a trail easement, and the, the owner, the property owner that gave us the trail easement couldn't have, had been set up differently, potentially received, you know, depending on, like Gary said, the value of the property, because it has to be appraised.
I know you can't really say, but say for example, you got a creek, a dry creek bed, you can't do anything with it. It's a creek, so I mean, could, could it be substantial enough? Say you got, they, they got now 10-acre tracks on Spells Road, if they had a creek in the middle of their property, in your opinion, would that, would that, would that be substantial enough of a reduction in their taxes? We don't know, I guess, you've got to look at each piece of property.
You really do.
Because, you know, people talk about money, that would be, you know, if a concert, is it, so is it conservation easement? Can you do it just one, like your property, you got just on that creek, like hey, I want to do a conservation easement only in the creek instead of floodwater? Can they do that or?
You, you could, you know, the, the smaller lots are harder for that. You have to, it would make a lot more sense because of the transaction costs if you had several of them together and you were doing a swath of it. And because with a conservation easement, you're basically selling a development, right? And, and somebody's holding that and, and has, needs to go out and make sure that the terms of that are being complied with and things like that. So there's some initial costs and some ongoing that just makes it work better if it's multiple properties or large property.
Okay, thanks.
So, given that this is outside of the city limit, it's fully within, well, not fully, mostly within Guadalupe County, somewhat Hayes, city of San Marcos. What can the city of Martindale do to get a planned concept like this included in their planning documents?
Those other entities, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are, you mentioned there's 48 some odd plans you guys reviewed. Given your work on this project so far, how are those being updated or being included now that this has really hit the mainstream of people's consciousness?
So that's, that is a role that we take on as the, the holder of the, that regional vision for, for that trail, San Antonio to Austin. And we work with everyone to keep moving those plans, the, the trail plan into the local ones. And then we update that with the steering committee. And so I could certainly envision something like that happening here with, you know, a group of people that represented the different entities that then were tasked with doing two things. First, reporting to the committee, okay, here's this developer in the city of San Marcos or there's this change that's happening. And so how does that change or make our, accelerate our timeline or whatever for this connected trail? Martindale to San Marcos.
Could we get a trail map like this included within the Greater Springs Project?
Yes.
Plan?
Yes, you, you can.
What, what process would we need to take to help facilitate that getting included in the plan?
I think it's just what I was talking about, put a group together that represents all the, all the cities, the counties that are going to be involved. And go through a process, have a, have a plan that is adoptable more or less. And then, then we'll just add it to ours to say, here's, you know, Austin, San Marcos and that map that you showed before that showed the San Marcos park, the San Marcos alignments, which again, those aren't our alignments, those are people of San Marcos and Hayes County and that said, this, this is where we want to build trail and our job is connected. So then we would add this to that. Yeah, and I would just say, just thinking a step back that for us, the more people that can connect to all the places, the better. And so we think of this San Antonio to Austin as a spine, but we want people to protect the natural resources and we want them to be engaged in the things that they want, which really are parks and trails, yes?
Caldwell County currently has underway a, a transportation plan update and it's being done by Campo. They're probably about three quarters of the way through that process, but it does not have a trail element a, as part of it. And the importance of a, of a transportation plan is that as developments occur and come to us, we're able to reserve or acquire right of way in, in various things. If it's not in the transportation plan, most of the time we're not able legally to do that. So, you know, and in Western Caldwell County, you know, as Virginia said, there's the, the smart terminals starting to, to happen, the, there's Cotton Center, there's some big development around Lee and Pettis Road, there's big developments around 1966, you know, where they come into 21. And all back through Maxwell, there, there are big developments on the, in various stages of planning. We're, we're able to, county authority is very limited, you know, as you know, and we're only allowed to do what the legislature tells us we're allowed to do. But we have a large lot sizes in our books and what that does is it triggers their desire to negotiate a development agreement with the Senate. Through those development agreements, we're able to ask for things that we couldn't normally require. But I guess back to the original point, if, if we were able to have a park settlement to that transportation plan, I could, I could see it, you know, that the next year or two years could be a perfect opportunity to acquire a lot of that. I don't know if there's a, an opportunity that we could connect with Campo and whoever needed to be part of that, but that, that might be a good place to start.
I, I completely agree with you, Commissioner, if you could go up a couple of slides.
Do you have a plan one with?
Yeah, right, go back. No, go back, I'm sorry, back, back, back. One, one, right there. So, I agree with you 100%. We work with Campo and, and, and San Antonio, the Alamo area MPO. And we were successful with AMPO of getting, this is from their 2050 plan. So it called out this Great Springs Project in the, in the corridor and some other trails. I'd love to talk with you about a Campo strategy for just that. Because there are, trails are transportation alternatives. And there are, there's funding at Tech dot, that there was a window that just closed for this year, but it'll be reopening next year for transportation alternative funding through Tech dot. And then in, in AMPO, they're going to have that same transportation alternative funding bucket that opens in the spring. And so I've been talking with Campo about when will they do it? Because they have the same funding sources coming from federal money to them. And, and they need to push it out to transportation alternatives, trails, sidewalks, safer intersections. They've not permitted yet to the timeline for that. But I'd love to talk with you about how we can encourage.
Hey, one more point, we talked about this, you say a trail has to go somewhere, well, we got it. Provisional, like, you know, we, as I kept talking, a park.
Yes.
You know, provisional park, like they do at Blue Hole. And, and if you want Lockhart anywhere else, San Marcos, we got one of the beaut, most beautiful river bottoms here around. And I would like to take all of you, all you guys to go see our property, our, our land down there and the potential is unbelievable. So you have a trail either by transportation for Lockhart or the trail through Colli Creek. As you said, the trail has to go somewhere. And they could come here and as you're aware, we're 10 miles to the headwaters. This time of year, the water's crystal clear, it's absolutely beautiful, beautiful. So that's just, that's, that's, I wanted to put that in because that's, that's just my opinion, I'm just one person. But a provisional park would be a killer, Texas Parks and Wildlife, the counties get involved, it'd help us. We've already got land here, of course, it has to be approved, but we've already got a lot of the property right now. We're working on others, so that's, that's, I want to put that in, that's, thank you.
I just want to mention one other thing, that one of the things that helped us in the, in the AMPO, getting a close relationship and getting the AMPO plan was that AMPO had commissioned a sub-regional study from San Antonio towards Seguin. And, and, and so that could be, to your question about how do you bring things together? It might be that Campo could, could broker something like that or sponsor some, a sub-regional study of this San Marcos Lockhart here that, you know, could be a, a way to bring people together and to talk about not just all kinds of transportation, including these kind of transportation alternatives.
A park, I had to say, it's regional, not provisional, I could be exacting for a regional park.
So, so is it trail, they're looking at alternatives, trails and, and things, San Antonio to Seguin?
Yeah, they, they did it, there was a sub-regional study that looked at all the transportation pieces and then through that, we engaged with that on the trail side.
Okay.
And then from that, then that's how we got moved, close relationship and got moved into the full AMPO 2050 plan. Your question about just how do you get parks and, I've seen how to get trails into Campo's plan? Maybe that's just a, could be a place to start is, you know, in a, a smaller area where it just makes perfect sense. When you talk about if people are going to go from Maxwell to here to Lockhart or San Marcos or wherever, you know, five miles is not, I mean, people.
Has there been any state interest in, in this and getting funding, impacting to make this a reality?
Yeah, if you could go up one, right there, so those are the two studies that Tech dot has commissioned, 18 and 19. And then, I don't have a slide on it, but one of these, the first and last slide has my cell number and email on there, please reach out. We worked with Texas Parks and Wildlife in the last legislative session to get money in their budget to do a study of regional trails. And so they, that was for Texas Parks and Wildlife that led it, the Historical Commission and Tech dot. And it was, it's not a, it's a study about the impact of regional trails from economic, social, historical, cultural perspective. And that was, came out in December the first and, and, and it talks about all the lines for these regional trails, why they are good and important. And that's a, just a great kind of place to stand on for these kind of conversations is if you go back to your slide about where the, the trail you're talking about could go, I mean, you're going to see in that, if you like that study, when, if you read it and you think about that or you think about this trail along the creek, you're going to say, oh, this study, on a statewide basis, this is how it can apply right here to Martindale, Martindale to San Marcos.
Mr. Goins had a comment.
Well, and I don't know if, when I finish talking about the trails before we talk about rivers, but the two kind of dovetail together, so I don't know if I can come in now or wait.
We're just about to go into the next.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have any more comments about the trails?
Yeah. Who would you say is the shareholder in that committee to discuss the, the lining of the trail? You said that you would have local governments, you know, so it would be Guadalupe County, Hayes County, San Marcos and Martindale involved in that conversation for something like this?
Yes, but I think in this case also, I would encourage you to look at. Yes, but I think in this case also, I would encourage you to look at the developers or the large landowners along the way. And include them in some of the conversation. I think that would be really helpful. And we didn't, we didn't do that with our steering committee for us, but we were engaged with them independently of that. So but in this case, if you're talking about significant land, you know, one or two properties, that would be a wise thing to do. And it could be, you know, it just depends on each of the cities or counties who they have. Maybe someone from the Parks Department, it could be an elected, it could be someone from Capital Works or Transportation. It just depends. Each place seems like it's different about how they move projects forward around parks and trails and open space.
Can I plug green infrastructure real quick? So like when we're talking to developers about trails and things. I was in a conversation with Wassima over the recharge zone. And I'm trying to get them to convert their sidewalks into permeable pavers. So that we can get a little bit of infiltration. And so a lot like if, for instance, smart terminals being added to the San Marcos, they have to abide by San Marcos' code. Well, if they use permeable pavers in some places, that's less impervious cover credits compared to like pure concrete. And so when we, like, if anyone goes out and has conversations with Guadalupe Caldwell County. Or they are having conversations with these developers, like the more green infrastructure, the better. If we can have, you know, a rain garden buffer between a sidewalk and a highway, then you're getting more infiltration. So like when we're thinking about trail print plans, like the River Foundation is not a trail building group. But we know that if we get people out into nature, they're going to want to conserve it. And it can be a method to protect the river. So when we're having these conversations, like make sure to plug green infrastructure. Because a lot of this can be beneficial for flood prevention. And that's really important, as we know.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Carol. I really appreciate, I mean, you must be a celebrity because look all these people here, man. Now we've got the counties, we've got Texas Parks and Wildlife, you know, real little bitty town, we appreciate it. I've never seen this many people on a Saturday morning.
And you're welcome to stay, but you might not be as interested in the rest of what we're talking about.
Okay, I'll stay for a while. If it's done, I'm going to have it done. I'm going to leave the cards up here and anybody.
Thanks, really appreciate.
This is my cell number. And so just be judicious on the weekends when you call me. Thank you all so much for the chance to talk. And I'm happy to answer any questions at any time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next part has come about because Landzola is deeding to the city. The parking at Skull Crossing. And so we're trying to figure out how to handle all of that. So there are several issues here. And then on the other side of the river, Michelle has land that we've been trying to figure out. How can people get into the river there? And so who should we have talk first on this?
Michelle, you want to come to talk or do you?
Well, I'd rather Steve be here to be talking about us.
Okay.
Tell us what Landzola is saying that they might do now as far as.
Well, they're going to deed that the parking area and a little bit, yeah, towards the culvert. So it's not, it's the only thing we can really do is provide parking there. I mean, there's nothing else we can really do with that land. So we'll probably be talking about how to charge to pay, how people pay there. Because we need to limit how many people are going to park there. In the last two summers, we've had so many people trying to park in that area that it's become a danger. So that's how part of this conversation has started. And then we had some other issues.
Well, what's really awesome about that skulls is Mr. Goins know we've been around here a long time. That's always been a point for canoeers, fishermen to access the river. But unfortunately, it's become other things. And as I said, I'm like, we're the, we're the town with a cannon band. And we have another thing, we have a cannon band, we have an alcohol ban, and then we have a fee base. Will keep a lot of people that really don't respect the river from coming here and, you know, trashing it and all that. So it's just another quiver in us to protect the river. But again, it's complicated because we need to have access, you know, everybody deserves access on the river, you know. And Tom, you've been through this, you were involved with that deal with the city and skulls, the skulls parking lot and all that. It's been going on for years, right? So if you wanted to add anything on that.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to comment about, nobody ever says no, something like that was said. Back in the seventies, Senator Kennard was pushing a pathways and pathway project on the Evergarden Loop. Basically, it was a linear state park. It was a, it was a place where people would be able to camp in certain spots. They may acquire land for camp sites to be put in. And there were also trails because there were some abandoned railroad rides around there. And people did say no. I mean, the landowners came out of the woodwork and it knocked it. Great project, pathways and pathways. Fast forward to 2014, you know, on the San Marcos River. Probably the worst year as far as tubers. Trying, basically there's a lot of misbehavior. I mean, we had one tuber carrying another tuber. A guy grabbed the girl, carried her, she's drunk, he's drunk. Later now, right in front of the church street, they were camped and started back inviting our tubers. I'm right and dropped my life. It was, it was so bad that we hired an army ranger every weekend to sit on our gravel bar just to keep people from stopping. By August, we were done. We were going to sell the place, we had had it. And we pick off on a vacation, we left all pretty much August. And on the way out of town, out of Texas, we stopped at Land O' State Park on the river. And noticed how nice the river was. There were no cans. Campers were pleasant. People during the day, nobody was drunk as scums like they are on our state through the river. Why didn't, no, no shot getting. And it was because the superintendent of that state park thinking very seriously. That, you know, we have a no public consumption and even if that's put outside, no alcohol. You know, let's get this straight. I know it's fun to drink a beer, I drink. But there's a time when we need to limit our consumption. I mean, I drink in state parks, but I'm going to drink kind of something like this. And I'm going to watch how much I drink. If if there's a piece of land in Texas that's open to the people of Texas. It's got to be G rated. Arm River is not G rated. It's, it's, in fact. We had, we were on the gravel bar in 2014 with our grandkids. And a girl on the other side of the river pulled her top off to get a beer, great beer, you know, she's just serving a titty. And all of us hollering, hey, there are kids here. And one of the guys, drunk guy, looked over and said, who would bring kids to this river? That's what it had come down to. So anyway. On that vacation, I think, well, why can't we just make the whole river a state park? The state owns the river. You know, we have, we have little pools in state parks, no public consumption. So I, in just a few weeks, I came up with this proposal. While I was on vacation, I talked to the people in Houston about making a presentation at the Texas Parks and Wildlife public meeting. Which is getting me out of Houston back here. And in just a few weeks, I learned that, that rumor. When people had said, we want a linear state park. Then we met in my chapel and our proposal was just going to be from Westerville Crossing, the Skulls Crossing. That's it, a little linear state park, four miles from the river. And we had a meeting and every landowner in the area turned up, riverfront people. I think on the left side of the river from Staples to Fentress, there are five landowners. They all showed up. And I thought, oh, man, there, it's going to be like pathways and palloway. They're going to come out of the woodwork and say, no, oh, no, it was the opposite. They said, you're not going to stop this thing at Skulls. People in Martinville said, and threatened the fall, and said, you got to include us. And the people from Staples to Fentress, every landowner on the east side of the river said, you got to include us too. By the time we we got done including everybody, we were pretty much all the way from San Marcos to Powell and the State Park. People said, we want a G rated river. You know, people in in the Draylene area, they're going through hell, you know? And it's all because rivers have become a place to go tubing and it gets knocked or shotgun beer, dog beer cans out. Why? Why have we allowed this? Anyway, I, I still appreciate it. I think a linear state park that dovetails great into these trails. And and for an example, H K Realty, the guy that's running the show over there said, he's had it with the drunks on his stretch of the river. What a negotiating thing you could offer. He said, well, we'll make the river a state park. When you end, in exchange for that, when you give us some trails through Coyote Creek. I think he's doing the heartbeat. He's got to get the river back, he's got to have a G rated river. If he's going to have multimillion dollar houses all along it. It's time, it's time to produce a linear state park. And it's time to have a G rating. And I've got, right now, I'm just, I'm just kind of. Got to pass some of these around. Okay. Look at them. That's dating because it's settled with the president of the Texas River Protection in some cases. I am retired, but my numbers are accurate. Also, there's a website, just Google San Marcos River State Park. And it's a website that I put up, I, I control it, it's not PRPA, it's many. I really think we get out, you know, we've got, we've got the river center at the headwaters. We've got all the parks in San Marcos that we've already dovetail in. We've got John Soaks Park. You've got my campground, which is a rock site. We can use Skull somehow involved. Your parks go all the way to, all the way to Alameda, Parks Park, I mean, Headwaters to Alameda. And you don't have to buy the river, the state already owns it. It's, I keep hearing, it's crazy expensive, no it's not. I think for the same budget as the old town and state park up in Sesterdale. You can basically, they hire a superintendent and he's in charge of getting the volunteers for the bat show. I think their total budget is 70,000 a year, state park. That would work here. And then you want to know about funding? Every outfitter is in, putting canoes, teams, whatever, in a state park. We have to pay a concession fee. Just from dogs and things to stay alone, you have hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it wouldn't really cost, their people much at all. Anyway, that's, I think it dovetails. I think we need, we need trails. But we've got a trail, we've got a river trail, let's just make it family friendly, make it kid friendly. And if the landowners are on board, they would not fight it. I mean, it's labor.
So the, is the purpose of the discussion? To, is what will the city do with this land once it's in our possession? Or is this a broader discussion?
Oh, that's called, the school. That's what we're discussing.
Well, I, I know that I have heard from Landzola that they gave the city that land as open space. It is not a very good area safe for open space. It has been used for parking for people by many, many years, not knowing who owned the land. Then we came up with the dilemma that we discovered that Landzola owned it, it was fenced in. But we were also discovering 25 cars or more through the weekend being there, going down to the river, trespassing, leaving garbage, bottles, diapers. So I thought that the, Michelle and Jecker, Scott Jecker, wanted to have a conservation easement. Where people that kayak, fish and hit in canoes, say, would have access to the river at those points. Where it would only be known by those people because there would be a gate and a fence there with a lock. That you could find the combination to the lock on your cell phone, say, or whatever. So I thought that was the discussion. And then I also thought that then those people that access the river could park in the Skull Bridge parking lot and pay money to park there. It's not park land, so I'm not sure where the money would go if the city receives it. But I have a problem still with it being a parking lot. And how do we distinguish between those people that are using the easement to kayak or fish there? And to those people who would think, well, I'm still going to park here and walk down to the river. And we would still have the continued nuisance of of trash, trespassing and all that. So I don't know how, as a city, we can differentiate between the use of having a conservation easement. And to still allow or not allow people to access the Skull Bridge. So is there any other discussion?
So Sam just said what I thought it was, the discussion was going to be also.
So there's, there's a couple of problems that have to look at if we're trying to come up with a solution.
Well, this is a work, this is a workshop.
Right.
And this is what we have a discussion about.
I just want to make sure.
This is what we're having a discussion about. And Michelle, I want you to be involved with this. And Steve, I'm sorry. And we've talked, y'all talked about this.
Mr. Michelle.
Way I look at it, I was the deciding vote to approve their plans. And the one main reason I approved their plan is because everybody gave that property to us. So at this point, the conversation is with you and us. So I, I think it's a good time for you guys.
What, he was just, I think he was just clarifying.
I just want to make sure I understand.
We're just trying to clarify what we're discussing.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought the Skull Bridge topic was.
Differentiating a a boater's use versus a pedestrian use. There's a.
No, we're, 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 we're way ahead of ourselves here. What we're trying to do is have a discussion. We have supposed, we're going to get this property to the city and we're, we're need to have a discussion. With Michelle and the other landowners to come together with some, some plan. Which this has been talked about for about a year. So that's what we need to talk, I think, I think the, the other discussion is later, but this is the point. Conservation easements on one side of the river. And then we have a parking lot, which has been, always been used for canoeers and kayakers. We want access, but I think this conversation needs to be with the landowners on the other side and with the, in the county, both counties here. But I'll let you continue, sir.
Okay. Maybe we'll just, maybe the purpose is to air grievances.
No, 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 wait a minute, it's not grievance, this is not about grievance, this is about solution based, okay?
Right, that's why, that's why I was going to, I was trying to.
It's not about grievance, anything. It's what Mr. Goins said, we have issues here on this river. And we, this problem has been a problem child for us. And we, this prob, has been a problem child for us and for as a law enforcement issue, but a nightmare for our officers. And there's garbage and trash and like Mr. Gowan says, it's coming down our way. We're getting the problems he has, we're getting in our city 'cause the, because of the drought and because San Marcos and the growth, it's coming our way. And I wanna make sure that our town is protected. And I'll leave it at that.
Virginia.
I have a question for Michelle and Mr. Michelle. Because Mr. Landa closed off the parking area. It's been closed for a little while now. Have y'all seen less trash, less trash and less trespassing because of that? Or have people still found a way onto your peninsula to trespass and leave diapers?
It's a hard comparison because COVID is what caused.
Right.
A million people that were.
All the parks for COVID.
But say, say we're moving forward in a post-COVID world, and I use air quotes, 'cause we're all probably gonna get it today. But that being said, if, if it, if that area stays closed to parking, it, and obviously that depends on what you call it, all proceeds and rock and all that and stuff. But say that area specifically, that one spot stays closed, do you think that that decreases your trespassing and your trash problems? That's important.
Well, except for then people started parking on the other side of the street.
Where you could have out of the city, no parking.
We could have.
We did.
Yeah.
But people park in front of the no parking sign.
And then they should get a ticket and that should go.
We, and I've been hesitant to start towing people in, in that, I mean, that's, that's why we wanna have a conversation.
Is this a law enforcement issue then?
No, it's not a law enforcement issue.
Well.
If there's illegal parking.
Not that we wanna completely stop people getting in the river. So if we take that land that Landzola is giving us and make it basically a parking lot where we start charging and say we only have ten spots, when those ten spots are paid for, then anybody else cannot park there and that would limit the parking. That's my thinking.
Right.
And then anybody else would get ticketed.
Are we okay having river access there then? Is everybody on board with that?
Yeah, is everybody okay? That's a good first question.
Wait, that is, we won't, we definitely won't river access. I mean, that's a problem with San Marcos River, we don't wanna shut down river.
Can we, Jared, can you get to what your points were?
I, I think Adrian was going there, it's like, what, what, so we do want river access.
Yeah.
But we want to, it sounds like possibly differentiate the use between a, a boater's use versus.
What are, what are, what are, what are the landowners gonna want out of this?
And what, what access do you?
What do you guys?
Okay, so when we were starting to talk to Texas Parks and Wildlife and Tom got us started with this whole rack idea of the river access conservation area, the possibility we were playing with was that peninsula, if it had a Texas Parks and Wildlife name on it.
Stamp on it.
If there was, as Tom had kindly offered to be kind of the traffic officer and parking coordinator for it. Yeah, uh, if that were to happen, then the dream would be that it would be a more controlled area and that the canoeists and the true nature people would have access and enjoy it as opposed to just the party people that are bringing their grills down for the day.
It's my understanding that river access is not a question, that's a legal right.
Right.
Right, so we're, we're not talking about for any closed or open river access. River, the river is accessible to the public.
Well, I, I, I thought that river a- access though, that you could, you can't really trespass from a road going into the river, but if you're already in the river and you have to get out, then you could go across private property. The property with Skull Bridge is that we had too many people there on private property.
That's the problem.
Parking there, I would like to see, not to see the parking lot as a parking lot personally. It was given to us as open space, which to me doesn't make sense, but if we do control it with the easement, with you as being the landowners, then that might be a viable solution. But I don't want to see it happen again the way it has been happening the last two years where every time I drag down across the bridge, you see so many people there and our chief of police cannot enforce that because a majority of them are trespassing on Guad, from Guadalupe County. I don't know if Guadalupe County has even cared to enforce this or not either.
Well, that's, that's what I, that's my question before, if it's a law enforcement issue, either it's coordination with the sheriff's office or if the city wants to play a role on the other side of the river, we could look at a limited, limited purpose annexation of some kind, bring that into the city limit. That way we have enforcement powers on the other side of the bridge.
Well, Michelle, you said it better than anybody in this whole room. What you just said about this, Texas Parks and Wildlife, maybe a conjecture of law, law enforcement, but make it something what you did, Tom, on the Brazos, right? Y'all had a parking lot, something along that line that we do not block access, but we control it and we have a fee base, so people have to pay, use it and.
That's the dream.
That's the, and I, and I want, I want the dream.
As a, as a private enterprise.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about a combination between the landowners and us as a city. Now, you wanna do a conservation easement? Can we possibly do a conservation easement with Texas Parks and Wildlife? I don't know. But we, the good deal is, and I told you, that was part of the deal why I approved that plan from Landzola, because they offered that piece of property. And that piece of property, we need, I'm a paddler, I've used that, I, I, we gotta have access.
I can, I can just tell you, in our case, uh, we're an alcohol-free camper. So when Parks and Wildlife approached me about us being a rock site, I said, number one, we don't allow alcohol, I said, no problem.
We already got that.
I said, number two, uh, I can allow, I have no problem with fishermen and I certainly have no problem with people launching Canadian kayaks, and we've done that throughout. And they said, that's why, I said, I don't want, I don't want to be open for unlimited tubing or for people to set up canopies on my gravel bar, 'cause they have limited gravel bar and you got a lot of people launching Canadian. And they were okay with that, so they know that worked with me. Uh, we have a lot of people putting in at our gravel bar and getting out in skulls. And so when Skulls gets closed, it's, it's taking out park sign 'cause it's a rock site. So that's why I offered, I said, look, if you have a locked gate, you know, I'll give out the combination. In my case, I have restroom. So when I have people fishing for the day, I've got restroom. That's a problem with this site and letting people fish, it could be a problem. Uh, 'cause they're using Scott Jecker, Scott Jecker says he's got the restroom. No. Mr. and Mrs. Michelle just have the, uh, access, so when they didn't use the restroom, they go to Scott's.
Virginia with you.
I've got two questions. So, um, the first is, if y'all go through with Raca, is your plan to still put a parking area on the Guadalupe County side?
Well, if Landzola is now providing this, that, that opens.
It eliminates that, okay.
Let's talk about.
So the second aspect is, if this is a Parks and Wildlife situation through Raca, why does the city of Martindale need to be involved? Because Parks and Wildlife has their own enforcement.
Oh, I would love to have Texas Parks and Wildlife involved.
Well, if it's a Raca situation.
Well, I would, if that was, that's part of the solution, I'd be all for it. We wanna get it to them. I mean, that's, it's not my decision per se, but. To give access, however we work a deal with Texas Parks and Wildlife to, for that piece of property.
Which piece?
The, the Skulls parking lot. This, this, Texas Parks, that's a, Texas Parks lot.
I, I'm the one that sets up these river access.
Excellent, here's the guy.
And typically, these are pretty primitive access through, through rural properties to rivers. The, the problem here is that Skulls Road, the access is from Skulls Road is a very narrow road, very dangerous to put in at. If, if we're going to establish a, a, we call it leased river access license, lease the property from the landowner for public use to the river. Uh, we typically promote those as fishing and tailing access only.
Gotcha.
No day use unless the landowner permits it.
Gotcha.
Camping, no fires.
Excellent.
Canopies, none of that. Typically, it's, it's presented as primitive access, no restroom.
Gotcha.
No zee boat, no picnic table.
Gotcha.
Nothing like that. You get in, you use the river or you can get out. That's, that's what it's for.
So, so real quick, is, would this be a viable location?
The lot, the layout of this particular property makes it a little tricky, okay?
What is it?
The river that flows on the east of, my, sorry, my right over here to the side, that, that little peninsula area, right? That's owned by the, by Mr. and Mrs. Michelle. And, um, that's the area of the question. So I, I think if we, initially when we approached this property, I, the, the parking lot up top was closed, gated off, and we, we were considering developing a secondary parking area on their property, okay, and allow people to access the, the river where they access now. That presented all kinds of issues with people walking up and down the road. Okay? So I think if we were to, to be able to do something here, we would need a second access to the river from the property.
Don't we?
And not use that access point at the.
We also, they also gifted this area, right?
Butterfly, butterfly habitat.
But it's real.
It needs to be just as it is.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be touched.
So, sir, you're the expert here. Is there any way, in your opinion, you've been through this a lot more than we have, is there any way you could do a combination with, with the landowners on the Guadalupe side and as the city to come up with a solution?
The city owns what property?
Be on the, basically on that park, it, go ahead.
Go ahead, point to it. This, it's right there, right near.
That little spot, there's also some over here.
That would be the parking area, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And again, I mean, if that, that's the parking area, how do people get in the river? Is the question.
Yeah.
They have to.
Walk down the road.
Yes.
And get in on right there by the bridge.
With blind curbs and.
It, it's dangerous.
It's been that way for years.
I, and I agree, it's been that way for years. Even in Google Earth images, you can see people launching their boats.
The big spot.
So, I've always thought, you know, you work with what you got.
Exactly.
You work with how people have already been using the site.
Got it.
And it's been good up until COVID. We drove across the bridge the other day and where people, well, in fact, we did a shuttle for some friends. And, uh, we pulled off as far as we could on the rock side, just past the bridge on the right, there's a little bit of an area. If that was just solely, it would have to be made larger there, the road would have to be a little bit wider there for, uh, loading and unloading only. The fly fishermen use that, so it'd have to be long enough to get a vehicle and a trailer, to pull off the road there and, uh, offload and load. And then they could go and park, they wouldn't be walking on the road, uh, you know? But I know that floods and it may get all washed away. But, you know, we have the same problem at Thompson's Island, the city closed off. That used to be a very popular, from Thompson's Island to our place, our place to Skulls. It's, both of them are about four miles. And for boy scouts, that's about all they can do. So it's just a problem on both ends. And while we can't work with what's already been happening, um, it's a good plan to get off there. That's the only place to lock boats or pick up boats, it's right there on the right at the bridge.
Real quick.
At St. Gulli, yeah. So, the road department, whatever would have to.
Real quick, you know, it's obvious that's, that's one of the most popular put in, take outs, probably on the river. Is there any way we can have a combination, like, I don't know if our parking lot's big enough. I mean, if, if you could do a conservation easement and then incorporate our parking lot, whatever you wanna call it, const, whatever you wanna call it, it's, it's like you said, it's for only drop off, whatever, like you were talking, could we work as a, I'm, I'm, I'm just one person here, but can we work as a city and with the landowners on the other side of the river to come up with a plan?
I, I don't see why not.
And, you know, we, we do have like, Mr., hey, Tom, you got any, you got any points you wanna make? You've been dealing with this.
Well, to answer some of the questions like the parking, about giving, giving tickets, the no parking signs, we can give tickets all day long, but as soon as someone's, when that fence went up and everybody started parking parallel on the other side, we would give a ticket and it's just tickets that on a windshield. And then other people would line up there. So by, by the end of the day, you have thirty cars lined up there. There's no really way to enforce that unless we got tow signs contracted with a tow company and just got them towed off there immediately. Really don't wanna do that, you don't wanna come in and enforce heavy handed like that. But that's really.
I mean, you kind of have to if you.
Absolutely.
I mean.
That's the only way to really try to handle that, because you can't put someone there 24/7. Stand there and watch that all day long, 'cause people go there in the night, in the night time, there's cars.
So are we trying to facilitate then safe river access? Is that, is that's a different problem?
No, no, we, like, like Paula said, this is what it is, it's always been this way. And the way I look at it, we need to, there's not enough parking, it's obvious.
Problem is, back in the old days, there were, I'd say a handful of people that used the river now.
Yeah, no, that's the whole problem.
So what Jared said, safe river access, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Or expand access in some way?
I think, I think ultimately, it, you're not gonna get, you're not gonna get rid of the people going down there with the barbecues and, unless we have jurisdiction to where somebody can go out there and enforce that.
Well, this man here just said.
Well, okay, well, the part I need to get to.
Explain it.
Is, is, these are again, pretty primitive. We leave it up to the landowner to regulate, so. I'm all, I'm pretty much a one man crew, I can't be at all besides.
So real quick, could, if we have came up with some plan, could, could Texas Parks and Wildlife inter, interface with our, with our police department?
Of course, we can interface with whoever we want.
We don't have jurisdiction over that.
Yeah, we don't have jurisdiction.
We could look at a limited annexation.
This is a workshop, hey, this is God, hey, this is a workshop. We're having a discussion between Texas Parks and Wildlife and our beliefs here. This is nothing set in stone, it's a workshop. So we're trying to problem solve an issue here.
Oh, I agree, we're brainstorming.
And we're brainstorming, so we just trying to come up with a concept and then we, then we elaborate on it.
But we have to see if it's a viable concept. Listen, Skull Bridge parking lot as of recently has been a problem. Two people were killed there.
I know that, that's why we're going.
Let me just finish a minute. Two people were killed there recently and people parked there at night because there's no lighting there, there's no streetlights. We have talked about streetlights, we have talked about transformers and all that. First, there needs to be safety, there needs to be lighting, and I don't know how many cars you see there at night, do you see cars there at night?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't think it's a safe parking space.
Maybe no parking after night.
Yeah, oh yeah, he just said it, day use only and have it, what, put up a, a fence or blocks or limestone blocks or, and you have it, they can't, with, like Tom came up with on the Brazos, you have a combination to a lock. Same thing for you guys, go ahead.
There's like a mile, there's like a mile road from the main road to that spot, a lot of the parts, that makes it a lot easier to control. You know, you're talking about a public road here and, and pretty much immediate access to the river, which people see as public access. Block, that fencing, yes.
I have two questions. One is, my understanding is, we're in the ETJ of Martinville, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So you would not have any authority there?
No.
River. Okay, that one question. Second is, we're talking about safer access, we have road and bridge and would we change, if we made a lane there, where would the money come from? Would come from county or would it come from Texas Parks and Wildlife to make the Raca?
I have a great answer.
Thank you.
Okay. This is gonna take a real left turn, so just hold on. So that bridge is an obstacle to the river. So from a, from an ecological perspective, it's not a good thing. Like, we've seen that little eddy create a lily pad haven. I like to tell people, there are a lot of water moccasins in there. So when they redid Skull Bridge and we saw the 2015 flood, obviously, nobody was thrilled with the way that was done. There aren't culverts on that river right side, which is why it looks like it does right now.
There is Guadalupe Blanco blood group money out there to resolve issues with flooding. That acts as a dam. So why not get the Texas Water Development Board money to go through the Guadalupe? And this could be a Martinville sponsored project where you go fix that road. Then you have a higher elevation, so you use.
That's, that's way down the road. We need, we need a solution now.
Let me finish.
I'm sorry, I mean.
That is a twenty, twenty fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't activate, is my point. Yeah. And so why go down a rock a road if you could close parking, get rid of some of this trespassing? For now, just sit because we don't have safe passage on Skull Road. The people that are gonna do what they've been doing, you know, forever are gonna continue to.
No, that's why we're here, we're, we're trying to.
I know, and I'm, I'm throwing out one idea as a brainstorming idea. So, long term, like twenty twenty-eight, you put in for that Guadalupe Blanco floodwater. I'm, I'm just throwing out an idea.
Yeah, let us, let us see.
That would potentially get rid of that parking lot because you would need that to give the proper access. So it's just an idea for fixing a obstacle in the river. And then it would get rid of your traffic. And I think of what you said about the aspiration. Yeah, that would be an aspiration long term.
But now that we have one town.
Yeah, what do we do right now?
We don't, we don't face the summer.
Yeah.
And we need to have.
Well, I think we, we kind of have to rule with an iron fist over there if you really want to make anything.
Well.
Like, if, if you guys want, I mean, you guys just put up that new fence. I mean, that's probably gonna help out a lot because no one's gonna go into that deep water. I mean, it's pretty deep right there, once you get that fence and you go around it, so that was a big, that's a big deterrent for, yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna go over there. You know, and I like to fish over there, thanks, guys. But on the other side, you're not gonna get rid of people going that way, you know? So really, if it's getting, if we, if we put out no parking with in tow enforcement and people start getting towed, that will, I mean, people will notice that. And you have, I mean, you have to start with that.
But then you know what they do? They go on the Guadalupe countryside and they start lining up along Skull.
So talk to those, talk to those owners.
Wait, wait, we got the people in the room right now to solve this problem, right now. We got Texas Parks and Wildlife, we got you as a landowner willing to do it. Tom Goins has had the experience with these conservation easements, so we need to have a conversation.
You can't have, you can't have that conversation unless you have, you, you can dictate what's happening over there.
That's exactly what's the song about.
But so they can't have any, they can't put a gate there and charge for people going in and out of that gate.
Who made the road a private road? Really outside the box.
Which one?
The, the bridge. The Skull Road.
Too many people, too many people use that road, too many people use that, get, get.
Right, but if, if, if the county.
You know what, really, yeah.
And cleared a private road.
Jared, is there an, is there an option for them?
I'm just, I'm thinking way outside the box.
Is there option for the property owners to allow enforcement from the city on the other side of the, of river? Is what, you know, or even if you did a conservation easement on some of the land, can that then be annexed inside the city or somehow, how does that work? I mean, is that a possibility?
Yeah, the, the, either limited or a full annexation agreement, um, plan would have to be developed, it's a landmark.
Again, let's go, let's just have a simple conversation and with these parties, you.
Mike, Mike.
We talk, we're talking, that has worked with Tom. We need to, that is the, I mean, I love, I love the dream, I love all that stuff, but we're gonna get hammered this summer.
Okay, Mike, Mike, what do you, what do you want to see?
I want to see Texas Parks and Wildlife involved with our police department, I want to be, I want to help you guys.
So how do we get, how do we get our police department involved with Texas Wildlife?
We have, we have a communication like we're doing right now.
I know, but how is it possible? If it's ETJ.
Wait, wait a minute, we have, we have the people that know what they're talking about. We have a police chief who's law enforcement, we have a guy over here.
You're not really letting anybody else talk, though.
I'm just saying, we're trying to reinvent the wheel.
Sure.
We try to, we trying to get this a, a solution for now, okay?
Sure.
Not five years or ten years or taking a bridge out or whatever, we're, we have a problem there. And that's what I'm saying, these people need to communicate and maybe we can have another discussion later.
So, so Texas Parks and Wildlife, what could you do right now?
Yeah. We can put up a sign.
Okay, we'll take it.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, it's like.
What, what would your sign say?
You know, we could say something like, this is private property, you know? If we set up a sign, we, we got to get the Rumbow and Mr. Wilder's contract with us, we can set up a rock a sign here. We can put up signage that says whatever we need to say, keep the numbers down, but that's, that doesn't mean that people are gonna respect that.
No, that's.
But I love it, I love it, it's simple.
I don't know, and that's, it's a really tricky area.
So what I was saying upfront is you have to have that respect from the city, that has to come. You can't just put up a sign and not, not, and you can't, you can't enforce it. It has to be enforced and people have to recognize that, and then we can start from there.
So, Tom, how do we enforce it?
So, exactly, I think the main weight of course, as I said a minute ago, is no parking signs and we contract with the tow companies, they can tow immediately.
On the other side of the river, Guadalupe side of the river.
No, no, so Guadalupe County side of the river, we work with those folks whenever, we will go up there, we'll tell people, you can't park there, there's no parking, give them their ticket or whatever the case may be. They will then go and park across Guadalupe County. We'll, we work with the sheriff's office over there and the sheriff's office will come and run them off and say, hey, you can't park there either because, whatever, but they're in the same boat we're in, you know, hey, we're just asking you to move, give them a ticket, there's really no way. So the one thing I was thinking, because there are consistent people, you see, I live right there, you see the consistent kayakers, canoers, fishermen, outfitters. We could, you could talk to the landowners who are along that and have a, a sticker, permit, where, hey, these guys are allowed to park here. You know, and then, well, why aren't they getting tickets, well, they have the permit.
Valid point.
So, I mean, something like that could definitely work.
Have a conversation.
Because those people are making money off the river and making money from parking on the property that isn't theirs, which is fine, that's part of it, but.
Are y'all gonna have, just a question, are y'all gonna have some sort of sticker for like a yearly?
So, so Adrian and I talked about that a, as well, we talked about how, how do you enforce that or how do you create that, a placard or, you know, a handicap ladder or something like that? So, just something that's annual fee, but then what happens, you limit the number you sell because at some point in time you're gonna run out of space. You sell a thousand, you only have space for a hundred, what did you do? You, you created a more nightmare.
We only have room for about ten.
Right, so. That's fair, I mean, there's really, I mean, it's pretty consistent, it's not, it's not more than, it's maybe five or six different outfitters that use that bridge, you know? Um, and I think that's, like I said, you have to build that respect with, between them and the city, and people have to see that.
I'm sorry, you might.
Parks and Wildlife, no, I'm sorry to interrupt, I don't know Parks and Wildlife, if we could build some kind of, with the property owners, build some kind of like turnaround or something that people could safely unload their stuff and then go park their vehicle empty instead of parking up on top, carrying. That sounds like Mr. Mr. Chell. And unloading all their stuff and tossing it in and taking off, that's one thing we.
I, I certainly think that's an option, you know, we have to talk about, how big, how much land they're gonna have to give up, how much that's gonna cost, you know, those sort of.
What kind of tax credit, what kind of tax credit they get?
How are we gonna fund that, things like that?
And there's going around that subdivision entrance, right?
So can I, can I say something?
Go ahead.
All right, so County Commissioner for Guadalupe County, Drew Eagle, sorry I was a little late earlier, I was dealing with a farmer on another issue. So jurisdiction alone, we've got two counties, a city, a river in between, uh, to answer the private lane issue on the Skull Road and bridge crossing, that's, that's not gonna happen. Um, it's a public access, you have to have that river crossing. Um, addressing the bridge, we are talking about that, but it's long term.
Got it.
Um. I wanted to ask Texas, what is your name again?
John.
John, so in reference to if you, if you do this, and by the way, Michelle and Dr. Michelle has not been here today. So in reference to their property, I've been dealing with this with them for a while now. Um, we've established no parking along that portion of Skull Road on the bridge and up the hill a little bit to their property. Um, law enforcement on our side definitely will do it as applicable, I mean, the sheriff will do that and you've worked with the sheriff's department. I've had the game wardens out, they're limited to what they can do. Now, if you establish a Texas Parks and Wildlife, then they may have a little more authority there with that kind of conservation easement. But in reference to the parking, I mean, I went out there with their game wardens one time and they actually, I felt like I was on one of those Lone Star Law shows. They, they put me aside in the truck and they said, we got, there were some guys down there on their property and they addressed it, but, um, we're gonna be human and everybody's, it's access to the river and it's a public road, so that's the challenge, I hear what's going on. And more and more people are, you know, becoming aware of it, like you said, it's a, it's a great place to be, but the sheriff will do what he can. But our limit is, is the very extent of Guadalupe County on a road that comes in, basically, the only road that comes in to that spot. So I'm not saying deputies, they're everywhere, but that's pretty rare for the deputy to go down there while they're cruising, okay? But they go down there during busy times and we've made a point of that, okay? Working with you guys, and, um, so that, that's a challenge, it's gonna be ongoing, no matter what. You're gonna have people who have no idea, they'll come, they'll see this place, friends at, I still call it Southwest Texas, sorry, friends at Texas State will come down with their friends and.
Y'all know better than I do how all that works.
But to me, the ultimate question is, if you want to do this as a Texas Parks and Wildlife fish kayak paddle, very generic site. What are the requirements that are gonna be needed? You can have to have handicap access or are you gonna have to have, because if you're, if you're talking about parking up on that hill on the other side of the river in Martinville, what are the required, because we, we go through all these requirements we have to do with the county.
Yeah.
So is that something that has to be considered for access? No, okay, so.
Again, what we do is work with private lander, land ownership, uh, to provide river access and generally it's quite primitive, okay? It's, it's just access to the river. Now, we're not trying to make a park, we're not trying to really, you know.
Right, but it would be part of your system, right?
Well, they, they, these are leased river access sites, they're not part of the park system.
Okay.
So, no. Uh, we, we get federal, federal, federal grant funding from NRCS, it's called the Voluntary Public Access and Habitat Incentive Program. And that funds these lease agreements with landowners, uh, Parks and Wildlife receives a grant, we dole out these lease agreements with, with landowners. And, uh, typically it's just the access, like I mentioned before, we don't do a lot of infrastructure, uh, um, some, some, some places are already kind of established as a river outfitter location on the river and some of those places are ADA more so than others.
Requirement.
Because it's not a requirement, it's not a requirement.
Good news.
Okay.
So, uh, we can make a primitive access here, but it's very tricky layout with that road, the counties, the county lines, the city lines, it's, it's a very tricky area.
And the floodway.
I have a question, so the, the people that I see that are putting up the tents and establishing their little domain, they're families usually with little children that probably can't afford to go somewhere where they can have to pay and everything. Can we require them to go to our city parks? Because we have access down here to the river quite a bit, where they could go to the city park and just leave that for fishermen and can we do that or can we not?
I don't know how you require it, but we certainly suggested all sign.
Yes, why don't we just put like a sign of all the parks in Martinville, put it up there? And then, then you're directing them or the police are even directing them about there's other options.
Yeah, other options for.
And then, this is not an ideal place for bringing kids down that steam road, it's, it's dangerous.
The, the best, to us, the best solution is one that we had pretty well worked out with Texas Parks and Wildlife until the city of Martinville started adding a lot of requirements that made it, uh, financially.
But, but by the way, I wish you'd have talked to me, as a staff, that was staff, and I wish you'd come to me, because he went, in my opinion, he went over his jurisdiction on that.
Being Dr. Michelle, I don't go to the meeting.
I know, I know. What I, what I'm, what I'm saying, what I'm saying as a council person, how about the rest of you people, but I want to work, work with you guys as any way be proactive and possible with Texas Parks and Wildlife.
If you, if we had, we had a, I don't know if you've been by, we've cleared a bunch of land, that, uh, so we're really ready to proceed with a parking.
Excellent.
The, the best thing that could happen here, one is, I think, I was talking to my friend from Road and Bridges, is take the yellow signs out because it, it, don't spend any more money putting them in because the kayakers and fishermen are the ones that take those yellow warning signs down, the tubers don't need to take them down, they don't have to back their trailer in. So, but we, we really want to support river access and the best parking would be to have a parking lot on our property up the hill a little bit, that there would only be one or two people walking. Probably not small children walking, but we don't want to have to build a private walkway on our property from the parking area down, that's, that became old for us to us. This is, yeah, primitive, thank you. So we're, we're prepared to proceed with Texas Parks and Wildlife. The only thing, and, and they would help with some of maybe, what, if there is any infrastructure stuff that would need to be improved, may, maybe there's funds for that, but.
Yeah.
Pretty much, it's primitive, it's, the only thing you need is the fishermen be able to back the trailers or the outfitters to put a truck and a trailer there to load eight or ten kayaks or canoes when I bring the boot down. So that, the safety issue would be that and.
Would that, would the, would the access point be off of your land or be still off of the bridge?
Access point will still be off the bridge, but I would be willing to move my fence back a few feet to allow.
I like that.
Safer parking area, but here's my concern. I understand liability.
Yeah.
And this is one of the reasons we didn't want to have a, a private walkway from this parking lot to here on our property, you stumble down the riverbank, who, whose land are you on? So the, the liability issue has always been a big thing to me as a landowner. Uh, somebody falls on my property, you know, on a trip at your house, Mike, what am I gonna do? You know, so.
What if, what if the city staff worked with you to establish a right of way over that area? Give us that limited jurisdiction on the, on the bounds of the road? It, it might help assist with law enforcement response, we're not reliant on the county deputies to, to really go out of their way. And because they're already controlling right there, you know, a couple times a day, especially in the summer, we're going there multiple times a day.
The other thing a parking lot does is the people pull in park, they turn around, they don't have to turn around on a Skull Road.
Well, then, and then if that's the case and if we can bring that to fruition, just shut Martinville side down and then put signs up, no parking here. And then enforce that, and then you guys have all the right to that, I think that, that would be a solution right now.
I think, I think we're gonna need both properties, but with the amount of traffic, it's gonna have to be a combination.
Well, I don't think, if you have, how many parking spots would be over there?
How many we need, you think, John? Um, the area I looked at probably holds maybe ten to fifteen cars, something like that.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's plenty for that area.
Do, do you want us, what's your view on having that parking lot?
We, we find the, we're, we're, Michelle and I are not opposed to having the parking lot, we think it would, uh, give us a Parks and Wildlife presence, we think like Dr. Mr. Goins thinks that having Parks and Wildlife there gives us a little more official badge, you know, a little sign that's the Parks and Wildlife areas, and now we have some Parks and Wildlife rules, you know?
You, you think it'd be a good idea for us to incorporate that, that piece of property up there, that parking lot?
He's talking Martinville side.
Yeah, Martinville side.
Oh, I think, I think in long term you may need it, but I think you could also say, I like your permit idea, you know, I mean, all over, I've fished all over the Western United States and a lot of the guides have to buy these passes, you go to a national park, you get a pass. It's an income source, uh, it, uh, you can then take that parking area along river road and put permit only.
You're only a park, too.
Then you can be towed, you know, but, but you're. And, and again, but when, if you watch the kayakers and the fishing guides, it's only one person going up the hill to get the truck.
Yeah.
He brings it down, everybody else stands there.
Yeah.
So for safety, yes, on the road, but that's mental to me, it's the safety when the Don's Fish Camp in Texas State and all these people are among the tubers and they've got kids running around in the traffic.
So my question, do, do you want to work with the city with Texas Parks and Wildlife, we can assist with.
Yeah, we can.
Work as a, as a partner or group.
It sounds like they already have the relationship pretty bound up.
We just, we just need to work on what the river, uh, on the access in along that right of way, it doesn't sound like they're providing any additional river access, they're just providing additional parking.
Being able to make it a.
So that's, that's something.
Liability from them, instead of them having like a little waiver, be like, hey, you parking here, sign that, can't sue me anymore. We could maybe help out with that process.
And then, and then we'd probably want to. And then and then we'd probably want to through through some investment of some kind. Create a safer entry point.
Entry point where?
Well, just from.
On the Guadalupe side of the.
From the park from their parking to the to the river. So it's.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I have a question about yeah, when I was a Martindale smoke jumper or in the fire department. We had I think of the municipal agreement with like Maxwell and. Wouldn't it be possible for the police to have a municipal agreement that function wildlife or whatever?
I mean, if there's a if there's an emergency, yes, we provide aid and respond, even if it's outside jurisdiction. When it comes to ticketing enforcement, parking violations and that such. Because it because it falls under the jurisdiction of our municipal court.
Well, it's also in a in another county.
Well, the county the county part doesn't matter if it's incorporated because it's still within the jurisdiction of our municipal court, but. If 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 Tommy went out or one of his one of his police officers went out and wrote a citation to somebody. It's 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 worthless because the the court can enforce it. It's outside that court's jurisdiction.
You gotta first establish jurisdiction.
Yeah.
So we have to establish jurisdiction. So there's lots of cities that have multiple counties. I mean shirts has has Guadalupe there and.
Well, how how are you saying that the city could help with building a trail uh from their parking lot down to the river on Guadalupe County?
Something like something like that would seem to what would make sense to me is a. Annexation of a an expanded right of way.
Yep.
That uh for so where if that road inch if that road is say at that widest point right by the river is thirty feet across. On one side or the other, extend it another twenty feet or so. And gravel it in for a primitive boat launch kind of beachhead kind of space for people to to have access to. So that we get the traffic off the road, pedestrian traffic, vehicle traffic, get every everything off the road. But but we. It doesn't sound like the Texas Park Wildlife is they don't make any infrastructure improvements. It doesn't sound like the property owners want to make any infrastructure improvements. If if the Parks and Wildlife plan goes forward, it doesn't resolve any of the issue regarding pedestrian safety. And if anything, it creates more of a problem. And so if the city wants to have a hand in solving that. We're we're gonna have to establish some jurisdiction over that part, those parts of the way.
Not in your jurisdiction, why are you inserting yourself?
To to help facilitate safe pedestrian access. Because of because of the question was there's a liability question. You you the the property owner didn't want liability if somebody walk, you know, parking the car. Walking down the road, trip and fall and now they're coming after you as a property insurance or something.
If they trip and fall getting getting out of the river on on Road and Bridges property, that's not my problem.
No, 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 but.
But see, Michelle, they're gonna park up there anyway and it's February and. Starting in probably March, April, we're gonna start seeing more activity. So we really have to address this idea of parking.
The laser.
Uh I don't have a laser, but if you want to. Or do you want to actually pull up Google Maps and just do like drop a.
I think shut down our side. We don't have to worry about it.
I I could do more focused image if you give me one second. Yeah, let's just let's just take the topic.
So Jared, if if we did just hypothetically shut down Martindale side. If we shut down Martindale side, what liability would the city have from?
I I think we're at we're at opposite ends of the spectrum. If we're trying to facilitate safe river access.
Well, I didn't think that was I thought we haven't had any real issues with safety, have we?
Yes.
Yes, with pedestrians with pedestrians running in the middle of traffic.
There was so many cars parked up there.
On what side? On Guadalupe side?
On the on our city side, but it but if.
Shut down that side and put no parking, total enforcement.
You're then all the kids are going to run down the street on either side.
But if they're but if they're providing the parking, all we have to worry about, I mean, we don't have to worry about anything. We would like to see a safe passage down to the river from their parking parking area, but what else do we what else can we do?
I think if you're if we shift ten parking spaces from our land to their land.
Yeah.
You're still gonna have that capacity demand issue where we have if we have ten fifteen parking spots on our side. And we close it and and right now it already spills over and there's a demand to me it seems like twenty five.
But we're parking on private property and they said we don't have any more.
My 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 point is if 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 the demand is twenty five parking spaces right now.
Yeah.
Fifteen ish on our side, ten on the other side.
Right.
We close down our side, they open fifteen on theirs. We're still at a net deficit of ten. Where are those ten going to go?
I mean, they can't go somewhere else if we're enforcing towing. If we're doing that, if we get the police police to enforce towing, they'll go, they won't come. I got towed there last time. I'm never going back there and that will that will.
But I heard I'm hearing different perspectives. We're either trying to facilitate the demand or trying to restrict.
Facilitate it with a safety safer place to park where they're allowing access. Where we don't have to worry about anymore. I'm I'm just taking liability.
Well, we really can't do. Okay, if the idea is we're gonna have this super safe, everybody's got this great walkway and it's nobody's gonna get ever run over. I tell you, that's just not gonna happen because here's the peninsula.
Yeah.
And here's this tiny stretch and here's the gunky water. You're not gonna fix that. There is no if we got people walking over here.
Where where's the parking area?
Okay, so come over here. Come over here. That's the skull house which we own and then that's uh Maddie and Elijah's. So we had talked about right around here.
Yeah, you you cleared all those trees out. You cleared them. I see you cleared, yes.
But this way.
Okay, so we talked about a parking lot like here. Now, what the last we were told, we were we were on the verge of making this happen. But then we were told, no, you gotta make a walkway that goes keep go, 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 go.
That would be ideal, but.
Yeah, but then even if you keep on, keep on, keep on, keep on going. Okay, this is a a steep drop here.
Right.
And then this is just crazy. That would be so hard to turn this into some kind of walkway that then takes you over there. The road has to be used.
What problem?
Yeah.
Well, the the we were told we had to have an engineered parking lot, engineered pathway and. In this, you you can't do that. It's primitive access.
Yeah.
So we put our parking lot in that corner and people have to walk about seven hundred feet to the river. Not much further than that or it's about that. Um, so you're talking an eighth of a mile or maybe a quarter from most stream. So you got one or two people walking that per vehicle.
Yeah, they're gonna have they're gonna they're gonna drop everything off and then go park and then walk back down.
To talk about how we're gonna get a little more runoff at the edge of the river.
I'm sorry.
But you're not gonna have this perfect scenario.
No, you're not. You're not. You're not.
And then you can y'all can do what you want up on top on River Road. You can permit park it. You can leave it closed and see what happens. I mean, I bet y'all can have a city council meeting and change that in thirty days.
You gotta have the votes. It's all that helps.
So what problem are we solving? Well, I mean, initially what we were talking about. Making it a safer place down there where not a lot of traction. We trying to limit that, right? That's really what we're trying to limit here.
The amount of people.
The amount of people that go down there. So how we limit that is have a restricted place to park and you have to have.
Because when Lanzola builds all those homes that they're planning to build along Northwest River Road, those people are not gonna want a whole bunch of people. There getting into the river. It's not gonna be countryside anymore.
It's gonna be a totally different situation that we have right now and people are gonna have it's gonna be a complete one eighty what we have right now.
But I think this year we could still allow parking. This year I think we could still allow parking and maybe charge for it. Have ten spots and then anybody who parks on the other side of the road, just tow them.
So that changes the perspective. Now we're trying to limit access to the.
No, no. Well, on the orange, we only have.
I mean, I mean, that's those are it's two different problems. So what it comes to.
Are you trying to restrict access or facilitate access?
Wait a minute, this John who made a great point. It's primitive. It's a drop off.
Well, that's established.
But that's not gonna happen because people are gonna want it like people are going to go down there and sit.
You're not restricting. If anybody wants to walk down there, they can. It's it's the parking. So if you want to walk, you could do, we can't close that off.
But we have to we have to limit the amount of people that go to that area, right?
We cannot limit anybody, but they want to walk down to that property.
We can limit the parking.
The parking, that's it. And what do you say? That's that though.
Yeah.
Well, you limit it because they can't. It's a drop off. But if you want to go fish, you could walk there. It's a public access.
Hundred percent, but if you limit the parking, you limit the people.
You limit the people with cars, yes, but so what you what you're doing is he's doing a drop off. So you're allowing people access.
But 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 what I heard um this Michelle was saying is that the parking spot is on the other side of the house.
I see a combination of both of Texas Parks and Wildlife, kind of I envision.
Combination of.
Of our parking lot and their parking lot.
They already said that it's not safe to where the parking lot is on.
It's never been safe there. Did it's gonna be safer now.
So let's go back to the question. Are we limiting access or trying to create safe?
Access.
Safe access.
Both you can have limited safe access.
Yeah.
There you go. I like that.
I mean, what what Michelle just said is like, I mean, you're not gonna get your ideal situation.
We'll never get our ideal situation and you know and the pie in the sky, make a new bridge and all that.
I personally think that we just need to limit the amount of people, have a good drop off area there, limit the amount of people that we allow to park in the area and we.
We're on the same page.
I think that's that's all we can really do because people are gonna people are gonna go down there no matter what. So we have we have to circle around at some point.
So from a city's perspective.
Yeah.
What would make it more advantageous for the city to burden a prop a property owner? Down on the in the Guadalupe side rather than create revenue opportunities for the city on the city side.
Sure, yeah.
We're good for doing both.
Well, I'm I'm hearing not both. I'm hearing one or the other because we because if you do both, then you're getting thirty cars.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're if you're trying to reduce it down to fifteen or fifteen.
Right.
It's it's kind of one or the other.
That's a lot of people right there, man. Sick like sixty people.
So if the city doesn't use that as a parking lot, what would we use that one?
Have a great day. I have to. Hey, thanks. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
If the city didn't use it as a parking?
Yeah, then what would we just?
We're not we're not doing anything with it right now. We're just letting we're just letting people, yeah, we're just letting people park there for free. It'd be open space.
Wouldn't wouldn't be paved. We would rip out all the paving and not have parking there. I don't want to see people there. We have parks. That we need.
It's just a draw offs, Sam.
Well, um but they can't drop it off up up there.
They can drop it off and go to their property because I mean, let's do do the math real fast.
We're gonna need both. The bottom line is we need to work with you people because we both.
Ten cars.
Let's 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 get a let's get a common understanding.
Yeah.
In in terms of total capacity, are we trying to facilitate? Is it ten cars, fifteen cars, twenty cars, thirty cars?
He said, well, he said, he said that his property probably give about fifteen cars.
That was uh which is the best option.
What what do you want with this parking?
Well, from the city's perspective.
What I'm willing, not what I want. What I want is.
Yeah, I know what you want. I know what you want.
What are you willing? Um, so I think, well, this fifteen acre fifteen um fifteen cars seems like a reasonable.
And where would the where would they be up on on the.
Well, what what we can work out is what I could do.
Down below.
Uh huh, yeah.
On the Guadalupe side, yeah.
Okay, so we are willing to to do that because we want to be um.
We're also just to give you an idea, we're very conservation minded. All that landscape has been cleared. We've got about forty five acres that over the next two years we're converting back to native prairie. Because we think it's the best filter and we're leaving the riparian zone. Free uh Virginia was here to tell we we I'm growing native trees. We gave the river foundation a hundred twenty citrus trees for reseeding the banks this year. So. We we have a half mile of riverfront. We're kind of made pretty. So that's our goal.
The other side of things.
Our goal is to conserve the river, number one, and number two, we realize we got to deal with humans and so we're gonna have to have access. So the I I would ask, what's the average number of cars parked up at the top?
It varies. I've seen thirty.
Thirty?
Yeah.
In the busiest time.
Outfitters or just?
No, no.
Going down and sitting.
People going down in the road.
We look at outfitters, people doing groups, you know, large groups, fishing guides, stuff like that. Fifteen is gonna be plenty on a given day.
So you have two different things here. So let's just I'll say this. So early in the morning, sometimes you will have a bunch of cars parked there because you got a bunch of bicyclists. Right? The bicyclists will come in, park their cars there, unload their bikes, go do what they're leading, right? Then they'll come back and leave. Then you've got the canoers and kayakers coming in. And then probably an hour or two after that, then you have the tubers, the families and everything coming. So it's sort of in waves if that makes sense.
They'll go sign up there in those properties says Martindale City Park this way.
Do we need to have both roads?
That sounds reasonable. I mean, we could.
Do we need to have?
John, he was the expert.
Yeah, yeah, kind of you do because.
Yeah, he's the expert.
Facilities, Martindale City Park.
He's the expert. He said, I call two things primitive and wrong.
And then and then on the other side, you can't.
The other problem is the trucks, the trucks.
So Michelle, do you want the city to to limit the parking up up in their area? Or do you want them to close? What what would you guys?
What benefits you guys?
That 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 benefit us. Well, it benefits us to not have it because then it does restrict the number of towed spots.
Yeah.
Make it easier for the law enforcement not to deal with it as much with every tru.
Well, that's my that's my whole thing.
So just close it down.
Thinking about.
You have a problem with drop off, a drop off parking.
There's not. You can make a drop off.
Well, he's he was.
They they love Parks and Wildlife for the access.
That's what I'm telling them, right?
We did a drop off. Michelle could do permit or not.
Yeah, we could do that. I'm I'm thinking the whole thing is really you guys are so gracious to do this and he's right. You got a guy right here. We got a law enforcement. Because that that whole area is a problem for all of us. Very a problem and we could fix that salute to our neighbors. You're not our city limits.
And and we almost had it. The city was didn't support it last time.
Well, you know what? You got my full.
City supports what we're doing. We're good to go, right?
I I support it.
Don't throw the baby out.
Certainly support for them, sure.
Yeah.
It's still being permitted.
Yeah.
Skulls existing parking could be permitted.
I think I think that's great. I think it's your best bet is do the permitting on that side.
I want to hear what Jared has to say.
Jared's got something on the tip.
Hi, you got.
He don't like it. He don't like it. What doesn't make sense to you?
We're we're let's. Boiling it down. We're trying to regulate a public resource. And to to create the most efficient use of that public resource, right?
Yeah.
So if we're trying to preserve the environment, to me that says let's limit use to to.
Hundred percent.
If we are trying to facilitate people using it, then that means we should regulate it. And moderate demand through the use of fees and in some sort of way, which creates revenue for us. We could do both, but then you're not. You're you're expanding access instead of restricting.
It depends on what we're permitting, right?
Well, we wouldn't. The only thing in the ETJ, the only thing we really have any control over is subdivision.
Yeah.
Well, that's it. That that's it.
Yes.
So they they can they they can do whatever they want.
We need to work with them.
This is the whole. This is the whole solution.
Mike, I agree with you. I agree with you. I'm just talking to up from a big philosophical discussion.
So if we if we're gonna go to permitting, let's just say we're gonna go to the permitting route and. Where do we draw the line on permits? Because then we're gonna have a nightmare of twenty permits and there's.
I I don't think I don't think seasonal permits work at all in this scenario. I think it has I have to be.
I mean, we have it's talked about.
Because you don't because you don't have you don't have a demand control.
Yeah.
What Tom is saying, you could issue a hundred permits, but there's only fifteen.
I I think if Michelle and her husband have a solution, that we should close our side down. Because that would limit. Because that would limit, that would limit, because what we wanna do is have, have those families that are camping out in the river move down to the parks.
Yeah.
Because they're a problem, they're the ones that are trespassing, and you know, going to the bathroom.
If that's the route there, uh, we suggest we contract with some towing company.
Hundred percent.
The towing companies are ones probably put up the signage, and everything else is in the trash.
I know, who, who agrees with that? I agree with that, I like that.
We can put some.
That's different from what I heard.
Yeah, I'm, I'm listening to Texas Parks Wildlife guy, and it's, it's, he said a big thing, drop off only, only, drop off.
That's what it establishes as a perimeter area.
A drop off, yes, drop off only.
Conversation with them, we don't have anything to do.
Yes, it does, because they're neighbors and they're.
No, 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 they, we're not signing anything at the end of the day.
Well, we're not saying what we're talking about, you know, we listen, we, we listen to people that have been, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. This, this gentleman right here is an expert. Tom Goins has done this before, the conservation, he's, but it works, it works.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
So then, we just leave any access to the river on the other side, we take no responsibility.
It's been, I'm a, I'm a paddler, and if you need to have access, but drop off is, if you have drop off, it, it's gonna limit.
Oh, they, they.
Yeah, that's what we're all.
Like, like, when you walked out of the room, you missed a roof's critical part, Michelle showed the area where they were planning to have the parking on the Guadalupe side, and you missed that.
Okay.
That, I can just offer, and I haven't confirmed it, my better half, but if you decide, okay, we're gonna have ten parking spots on, at the old triangle, or fifty, whatever you, mark it off, you say trailers too. We are using the putting sign, that's where the fly fisher and fisherman, because we're a rock aside. What if we only, we kill the permit, and that, those parking spots, and when someone registered in our place, and they have, they have contacts as a head of town, maybe even reserve, like, an identifying spot. And then, that parking can be very regulated, uh, the only people that are using it are people that are lodging and taking out there. You can, you can have a very limited use of the triangles, but still allow a takeout. Um, and we can be in charge of how many permits are issued, because once they're gone, they're gone.
I think we need to, I don't know why I didn't think about it, but Paul Torres, he's one of the fly fishermen, there's Diablo, there's Seal Country Fly Fishermen, there's Kevin Hudson, I mean, there's, uh, half dozen outfitters, fly fishermen, that put in at our place, take out skulls. So we need to, I think see, you know, at least let them in, Paul said, you know, that he would love to be involved in the process, so, um maybe they could have some good ideas, about what they needed, you know, what problems are.
And then they would, they would in and take out, you know, parking spot at.
Work with them.
Michelle and.
You know.
The run part.
Yeah, I think, I, I personally, and I, I do, I do think, I think once you start seeing the cars there, people just follow order, and they're like, well, why didn't they get towed? You know, and then you have this whole explanation of, well, they got a permit, how do I get a permit, and then you gotta go through that, and like, ah, just shut it down, work with them for the parking.
You could block it off, you could have it with a gate or something.
Sure, and then you.
That would keep parts.
Then you got somebody parking right in front of the gate, and then that person can't get out of the gate, and then it's like.
It's regulated, it's regulated.
Yeah.
It's not safe to have a gate and, and a fence that close to the river.
That's just, that's just, I mean, it's unsafe, no, it's unsafe. Well, let me cut it, well, I, 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 I'm, I'm kinda, that's kinda for me, it's kind of a difficult, because I'm a paddler, and we need access, and I, I think we need, if it's, like, John said, it, it, it's a drop off, and that's what we gotta look at, so drop off, if it's a permitted drop off, or whatever.
You can see the problem right now, that car, I realized that's how they were parking there.
Exactly the problem.
They got half the road, but you're being.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're parking on both sides of the street.
They don't, they don't know how to back a trailer up, obviously.
Well, there was some fishermen trying to climb over the hill right there.
Yeah, it's a fisherman.
But I think, I think Tom's got a good suggestion, we could do some kind of specialized permit, drop off only, and then that that would eliminate, we would get revenue and eliminate the problem on Skull's Road, because the problem is, that thing has been there for years as, as an access.
So, so, I, I wanna understand your point there, Mike, with permit, drop off only. Permitting authority ends at the water's edge on the other side of the river. We, like, where that boat's going in, we don't have any permitting authority there.
We do have that parking lot.
Okay, so you, we're talking about the parking lot, not necessarily.
No, 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 the parking lot, established part up there, up on Skull's Road.
So that's, that's what we would permit, we can't, we can't control people getting into the river.
I totally say that, if you wanna walk down there, you can do it if you want to.
And so, and so I'm, I'm hearing, you're on the opposite ends of the other council member, I don't know if with only having three council members participating in conversation, are they ever gonna res, be able to resolve this?
I don't mind, I don't mind the, I don't mind the permit, I don't mind the permit process, I just, like what Tommy said, once you start giving out permits, how many do we give out? If somebody comes up here and wants a permit for thirty-five bucks a year, and they're like, well, we only can give out twenty, we already, we are capped out.
It's another thing, it's first come, first served, you're there. No overnight parking, but they're overnight, they're, they can't do it, there's a lot of places where they issue way more permits than there are spots, it's not like you get slot number one.
Hundred percent.
But, but remember, this is why Steve and Michelle had to be involved with this, because they're providing parking too, so there's different types of parking, say the fly fishermen, for example, wanna use that parking lot.
So, if somebody comes in.
We're permitting, we're permitting a kayaker, but we don't permit a family, or if a kayaker gets a permit and he wants to go down.
No, no, that's, 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 what he's asking, what he's asking.
I, I, I get your get it, so they don't want, which is, we know is the biggest problem, are the people that are going there and using it as a beach.
Right.
That is not what they want.
Right.
This is what they, what is supposed to be used for the spot is dropping people off to go in the river on, in a vessel of some ilk, this is not for people that are supposed to be on that beach, because they are trespassing, we need to get those people, as you've been so good about doing, so, the park is this way.
Yeah.
You need, you need to go to the park.
Want the families to go to the park.
The families should not be beaching on that island, if you will, that peninsula that is out there. So everyone else, it's just, you know, let's, how do we facilitate, if you guys wanna give them access and charge, or whatever, which way you wanna do, that's your business, it's your property.
So, if they already have a deal worked out with Texas Parks and Wildlife, to, and they have a parking spot, so then the people who wanna put in are gonna go down there put in their boats or whatever, go back to their land and park.
Mr. Governor really hit it on the head, it's, it's the beaching activity.
That's what we're trying to get away from.
That's the problem there.
Yeah.
We, we only have control.
Yep.
Really, nowhere, um, except for where the city owns property.
Correct.
And so, if, if, it's a beaching problem, it's a private property owner's, um.
Nightmare.
Well, it's also their responsibility to contact law enforcement and have that situation resolved. And so, if, if we want to close down the beach.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't close down the beach.
But, but if, if we wanted to regulate the beaching activity, the city, the city doing it, we would have to, or the wildlife or something, we would have to have some sort of contract something that would give us jurisdiction over that beach, because right now, we have none.
Best jurisdiction we have is to put a big old sign up right there, and tell them to go down here.
Well, it, it really comes down to, the, well, that, we can put a sign up, but we can't enforce private property rights if they're not invoked by the property owner, right, so the property owner has to call the, the dispatch get these people off my lawn, on, on all sides, all four sides of that, of the river and the bridge, without that, we're not gonna solve the beaching problem.
Well, we have one side, though, we have our side where the butterfly, whatever that is there, we do, we do have that one side adjacent to the road.
They really don't go in on that side, so.
They don't, and so, see, but I'm just saying, they do have jurisdiction there.
So the, the issue.
They walk across the bridge.
Yeah, there's a couple of state laws that we can enforce, but they're out of our area, which is blocking a passageway when they put their cafes up, because that is a passageway, right, for canoes and whatever else. So that's a, that's one way to look at that, the other way is if, I, I, I mean, don't kill me, please. But if, if there was some kind of, what you were saying, some kind of limited annexation agreement with you guys, and so that becomes in the city, and then we have some enforcement
jurisdiction, yeah.
over in that, in that area, if y'all wanna voluntary.
I'd rather start with Texas Parks.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, I'm, I'm just saying that, that'd be a way.
That's not gonna fix your beaching issue.
And, and.
You're still have to call dispatch for that, every time.
We are not expecting there to be a problem in the free world.
No. But if we do, but if we do limit the amount of vehicles, which is people that go to the area, you're gonna have less issues, which is really what we need to be focusing on right now.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, and really, when it comes down to it, from a city perspective, those permits, if we get twenty permits for thirty dollars a year.
That's.
I mean, if we, if we're gonna do, if, if we're gonna do any revenue generating, we do day parking, twenty dollars a day, flat fee.
Yeah.
We'll talk about it later when we get to phase one.
But, but what we do that.
Then you're, then you're collecting, you know, four hundred dollars a day.
Sure, but then, then people, then people in that access are gonna be beaching.
Hundred percent.
So, do we wanna get rid of the beaching problem?
Well, the problem is, or the issue for me is, looking at the city administratively, is the beaching really the city's problem? It's people's enjoyment of the river.
Sure.
And so, if it's, if they're trespassing then onto someone else's private property, that's a private property owner issue. Unless we have, to the chief's point, some jurisdictional authority over that land, where we, we don't.
We're here today to try and solve that problem.
Yeah, and we're here, and we're here, we're here to work, we're here to work with the neighbors who don't want that happening on their property, and that's why.
I think, I think there, those are, those two things are exclusive.
Totally.
You cannot facilitate, you cannot create a revenue generating rating opportunity with the parking spot on, on, on the other side of Skull Bridge.
Why don't we do?
Also protect their private.
Why don't we do that, what you just said, twenty dollars a day, here?
Where?
At our city parks.
Oh, no, no, we'll talk, yeah, well, that's, that's what we're gonna get to later today.
I mean.
But it, I think if we, I think what to, to, to Mike's and your point, there, there's two, you cannot, you cannot achieve both.
Yeah.
You cannot achieve both, there's, there's no concept in my mind where you can both restrict access and solving, and, and allow people to have access. Incompatibility.
Corral.
Twenty dollar parking fee for your city park, that's gonna push everybody right back to our place, into the non, uh.
Yeah, but none of you have limited parking, and then if you have big X's that we actually enforce down here, then they won't come down here.
Yeah, then the reason, again, one of the reasons we're here and having proceeded was under the city of Martin Dale's ETJ neighborhood interpretation, is they, is the city was starting to put things on us that made it prohibitive to work with parks and wildlife, so what we need out of today is the city saying, y'all can do what you wanna do with your private property, and we're not going to.
In almost all, in almost all respects, that is true.
Yeah.
In almost all respects, there, there's, if you're looking to subdivide that land.
That's not what we're trying to do.
We, we can't, we can't control who, who you contract with, whether it's a private entity or state entity, we can't do that.
Well, we, we shouldn't have, because that's really not our, our.
I know, but, but we had it, we had a roadblock, if that roadblock's removed today, then we can proceed, and then y'all can proceed, as the city proceeds, we'll be good neighbors.
You have my word on this. I think we do.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see, I don't see any, any way that we will, you'll have any authority on saying what you can or cannot do on your property when.
Unless we wanna do a neighborhood, and then you're involved, because then you're ETJ.
Right.
Only from.
Really, ETJ only comes into development agreements, subdivision application.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a development agreement, right, he's correct.
So it really, really have no.
Yeah.
If you wanted to contract, you know, lease out your entire property space to, um what is that, that float fest? You know?
Thank goodness, I'm floating.
They're talking about.
The, the, the city cat, you know, float fest two point O, we, we, and it's not, unless there's a public safety issue, there's no real
Right.
way we could.
But are you gonna say that it's a public safety issue if people are walking from the parking lot to the?
Well.
If you have a public safety issue, you're going to count.
Oh, but, but.
Yeah, and they're, and they left.
I think, I think this, John, John made, made a valid point, it's primitive, and it's drop, it's drop off. Could you, you got any point, you're the expert here, you got any points you could add to this conversation, any way that Texas Parks and Wildlife could help with this this dilemma we're in?
Look, I, I, I think we can help, uh, I'm not exactly sure how, I think, you know, we have, like I mentioned, federal grant funding to work with landowners to provide your access. So, if, if, if Martin Dale's okay with us developing a parking area on, on, on their property, on the Guadalupe County side have people walking down the road, I mean, that's a not ideal.
Oh, it's not ideal.
It's not ideal, but if it helps, then we can pursue it. I mean, and I really like the idea of widening that spot down by the peninsula as a official drop off with a sign that says if you plan on day using here, go down to wherever parks you go.
I do see a lot of people walking their dogs on there, they're not even going to the river, so that, that road is being used as a walkway.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, I think people walk down the road.
Well, where it becomes a hazard is when you've got cars parked along, and you're having to go out into the river.
Exactly, exactly, good point.
And I guess the bicyclers are using it, because I want to be in the park in there and then ride and.
Or outside of my bike.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some days they come down here to.
I want the idea of towing the car.
We solved any.
No, I think we did, I think we got some good points out of it, I think we.
It's definitely heated debate.
Well, we can get started that way, so we're gonna start talking to them and re-energize them.
That sounds great. I would like, I would personally, if you want me, I would love to be in that conversation, if you want me, because I, I totally am supporting you guys, and I think, I think.
Then if it's, if, if the beaching issue is a persistent issue, then we'll come back to the city and say, hey, would you consider annexing that peninsula?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we have, and we can solve it, but solve, you know, one step at a time, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we are, I, I, I'm, you know, on our property, I have a trout unlimited, it has a saying, one foot wet, no regret. And not trespassing if you got one foot in the river, and, and I really like that concept, the river's there for all of us to enjoy.
Totally agree.
And all we really want.
To be, right.
We just want people to respect the progress.
We're on the same page.
We're on the same page, and, and you get that concept, and we teach it, and.
It's just hard to get everybody on the same page, we all have different thoughts.
Do we, do we have interest, or is there a conversation with the property owners to the east of, of yours?
Yeah.
We've been talking to them, and, and they met with us in, in the Parks and Wildlife too, he was gonna let us take the first step and see how it goes, and then maybe he expand.
No, Jucker.
And I, I wanna have a poll with all our city, that we, we, our, we do not, we wanna work with you, we do not wanna be obstructive at all, we wanna.
Wanna protect the river and.
Yes, we got this, at least I do, I have the same vision you do, and we wanna be proactive, encourage you, doing a great thing, and we appreciate it, and whatever, speaking for myself is, you got my hundred percent support.
Well, thank you, we love being here.
Now, thank you for coming and talking, and, and you're part of, you're, you're a part of the solution, we're a part of the solution, we all have different ideas, but we need to come together, we have a common interest. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Oh. Who is that?
Go ahead, Angela.
It's me, Angela Jimenez.
Okay.
Okay, I was just wondering, um, if they allow parking there, and we, we're talking about beachers, who's going to maintain that as far as trash and um, the property, because if they allow parking, it's gonna, it is gonna cause damage to that property, I mean, if people are parking there now anyhow but who's gonna take on that responsibility of keeping it clean and everything else?
Angela, this is, this is Jared Allen, the city minister, it would have to be on the private property owner, um, to maintain.
Yeah, and it's a private property owner that has a rock aside, it's no issue.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Bullet point.
I'm glad you're watching.
You wanna take a break?
Yes.
We do want to.
How's that happen, a point?
Topic of honor, yes, for the storyboards and the seed planting at the parks. And I would, I just want to say a few things. So we met yesterday with Mary Jane, Mary Beth, and who is the library, the president of the library board, and Carol Devini, who's the grants writer, and Ashley Guerrero, who's the library director, and two volunteers from a fraternity. And so we had a little meeting about spreading the seeds. Well, before Lee Russ left, apparently they decided to spread some seeds over on Fannin, which the rest of us were not aware of, that they were creating an environmental zone over there, is what they called it.
In the city parking lot.
Well, the, on Fannin, the bear lots that we have, that all we do is mow them. So I don't see that as a problem that they did that. It's just that, you know, he didn't talk to city council about it or anything. So I'm just making you aware of that, that they were planting.
But it is overflow parking, conceptually.
Conceptually, yeah, for the park.
That's the city, that's the city language.
Yeah, we have three lots over there on Fannin that the city owns, and we haven't really done anything but mow the grass on those lots. So they, she explained the seed spreading in all three parks and on the Fannin lots. So in Gardiola, in Allen Bates, and in Phase One. There's, and there's different seeds that are being spread. We were going to, and we ran out of time, print out the, these kind of maps so that she could put on there what seeds she was planting where. Now, when we first talked about it, I thought that the storyboards were going along with the seed planting. But when we met yesterday, it sounded like the storyboards is this whole separate grant thing that she's applying for, or would like to apply for.
Yeah, so I'll speak a little bit on that. This yellow zone here is where Carol's considering, Carol, the library itself, not Carol, is considering to do an environmental, educational area. It's close enough to the vicinity of the park, and it's parking that a person can go across and see the different kinds of seeds planted in that area. Now, a grant that will complement the current seeds that are now planted there is, has to promote educational information on the seeds that are planted in its environmental area. The only addition to it that may be something for city council to consider or approve is for the library to pursue a grant that would add a sidewalk type of path that circles around this yellow lot.
Oh, I thought that the storyboard.
That's a storyboard, which would actually have the storyboard.
No, the concrete thing is a storyboard, that's for Bates.
Yeah, that was a whole different concept. So they're going to do an educational thing with the seeds. That's part of the component of planting the seeds. The second grant, so it's two separate grants. The seeds and the educational component of planting the seeds was the first grant. And she's got that, and she's got the seeds, and a lot of the seeds have been spread, and then more seeds are going to be spread. The second grant is the storyboard. And so she's going to get as many as 18, but they would be permanent stanchions, is what she would like. And it would be in Allen Bates. It would make a loop so that they could take a book apart. Most children's books would be about 32 pages or so. Well, and so, yeah, she was getting more so that if you had a longer book and you were going with the child on the story walk, you would go kind of in a moon circle, or half circle, kind of, in the rectangle. But that, that grant she hasn't applied for yet, and they would be permanent, is the way she described it. So that would probably be something that city council would discuss if they want that kind of thing there. Now, I don't know where the soccer goalposts were supposed to go.
They'll be over here on the other side.
Oh, okay.
Well, when we first talked about these seeds, and I had talked to Carol Devini about it, I initially thought that the width of the planting bed was only going to be six feet wide from apparently how this looks. That's from the property line all the way to the gravel path.
This is conceptual, it's not accurate.
Because that, if, okay, if we can keep it to six feet, I think that would be better.
That's all we have planned.
Yeah, so can, can you scrunch it up a little then? Because if you've got that big of a space that would give the concept that that's all going to be planted in wildflowers, all that rectangle will not have to, cannot be mowed throughout the whole summer because of the presence of the wildflower seeds.
And even into next year, it just wouldn't be mowed.
It wouldn't be mowed at all, yes. It, it, it would be a no-mow zone. Now, I did work with one of the friends of the parks, and we prepared a space on the other side, which was rambling and sort of snake-like, but it ended up being too wide and possibly was going to interfere with the soccer field. So I coalesced and said, okay, let's make it six, six feet wide, which I can see makes sense. So that's all I was curious about.
What all they plan is, right, you're six feet, that's not, that's not, I can't do that right now. But it's going to be about a six feet wide bed along the side of Northwest, I'm sorry, Allen Bates Park, where the parking lot is. They, they got volunteers to do it, they have the tools to do it, and it's what they plan to do. It's really, there's nothing on top of it.
I'm just curious about watering, you have to water these?
No, because they're.
No, they require no city resources, other than land. And if they fail to happen due to a flood or something, then the library says that they would reapply for the grant, but if they're lost, they're lost, it's fine.
It's better to put it away from the river a bit.
So it's going to start from close to the parking lot up until they run out, if they have any left.
Go for high ground.
And it depends on the seeds, because they're going to be in every one of the parks, plus the Fannin lot.
The, the main project is at Allen Bates, and there will be some seeds planted on the front of Gardiola Park. Can I make a quick visual of it?
I thought it was towards the back.
Don't want to be running.
It should be along, along.
Yeah.
It's pretty shaky there in the front.
And if they fail, they failed it.
Yeah.
It's, it's an attempt.
Those there, Gardiola Park, that you have that one, those, these seeds are going to attract hummingbirds and also some.
We have to fence that off or designate it so people are just going to walk over the.
There's going to be signs that say, no mowing, and it's also said, what's planted there?
Oh, so, so Carol has talked to the sign company already, and there's, they're ready to go if we give them the okay. It's $169 for some signs to put in the parks of where to walk. I haven't seen the signs, have you seen them?
Yeah, I showed you the other day. There's a, there's a lizard on it, there's some butterflies on it. And they're, they're simple signs, but they require no counts of action.
Is it part of the grant money, or that we would pay?
We would pay that out of potentially our park fund.
Yeah.
The grant wouldn't cover that?
I guess not.
Grant covered the seeds themselves, which was $500. And then we got awarded an extra amount of seeds.
First off, we get a grant, it has to have an educational component. And also, when these seeds were selected, they were selected, look up, they are native, you don't have to be watered. And if we put signs up, you know, don't mow in this little area, then all I can see is that it's going to be unified for us.
So.
See that morning, we got some.
No, I'm just, I'm just fascinated.
So in Phase One, it's in that. So we've been trying to discourage the parking on that top side there. We built the road on the other side in the parking lot.
It's right in the middle, though, the road is right in the middle by those white.
This is what people would drive around to, and putting some seeds here and showing actual vegetation may dissuade someone's, of course, anybody may act on their own actions and destroy it, but.
We do need visuals so that when whoever's taking care of the parks, they know where not to.
Okay, one of the things that happens with wildflowers at the, at the beginning of the season, you'll have certain kinds of wildflowers that bloom. A lot of pinks, a lot of yellows, a lot of blues. Okay, and as the seasons progress during the summer, during the hot part of the year, there's a lot of yellow stuff. Toward the fall, you'll have different kinds of yellow flowers. But anyway, all, and we've got seeds for different seasons, so there should be something blooming all the time.
Real, real quick, real quick on these signs, are they just like a little, you just put it in the ground?
Yeah.
They're like, yeah, campaign signs.
So, I mean, is there any way we could, I mean, the only thing I, I could see, if we have a flood, we'd lose the sign.
Well, yeah, you're going to lose the seeds too, so.
Well, the signs will actually, will cause litter in the river, but I'm just saying.
Well, if we know it's going to flood.
If we just pull them up, really, we could pull them up to where.
Sure, yeah.
They're, they're like your.
First on the list, you get down there, pull the signs.
I think, I think I'll be pulling my lawn for a picture. I think I'll be doing it. Okay, I'm just saying.
You signed up for it, Mike, you signed up.
Yeah, I got help. I have a split.
Seeds that we want to put in up in here would be to attract a lot of pollinators. Bees, birds, insects, all up in this area. And another part would attract hummingbirds.
And horny horned toads.
Horny toad, we were saying.
We didn't want to call them horny toads. They, they, they don't, they're calling them horned toads.
Our son's calling them.
Yes.
Well, I mean, if it's anything like the people who use the river.
Do we have any problem with people going off the road, say?
Yeah, just a little bit.
Not as much now because of the paved, the paved road has alleviated a lot of that. There are some large ruts on the other side of the planted portion, but the road has facilitated safe and dry passage. It's very good, and, and the parking.
Is there any concerns or questions as far as where the seeds are going to be planted?
Can you show us? So in Gardiola, it was just at the front. In Allen Bates, it was about six foot with, okay, and then.
Okay, if you're looking at from the road, at Allen Bates, it'd be on the left side.
Yeah.
On the left side.
Here, here's outlined.
If you guys are down on the other side.
Oh, gosh, it would be great if we had a printout of this too.
Yeah, I could do that.
And then the Fannin lot.
Fannin lot, where we have some seeds planted on it.
I, I think the concerns we had about the Fannin lot, and why Lee was concerned about wanting to plant them there was that we were getting residential parking from the two blue homes there that were parking on the city lot. And we were, we were, plus the debris, the garbage, the stuff they were throwing over the fence. Fortunately, that's cleaned up, and the, the parking with the signs, I think, will stop the parking from the residential parking that, that we're seeing there. Fortunately, two, two homes have been torn down, one on Fannin and the one next to the house on Stilt. So I commend the city for enforcing that and seeing that those homes have.
Is that out there where the.
Yeah, the house that's no longer there is in this corner lot.
And the one.
There's one across from it, on the same side.
Looks much better.
Both of these houses are no longer there.
Has the library reached out to the adjacent landowner here at Allen Bates Park? If we're putting up storyboards that look over a unimproved space, how do you know what you're looking at? Are you looking at the field or just the ground immediately in front of you?
Are you asking about sage or storyboard?
Though, though, aren't they related?
Educational component to the seed planting.
Exactly, so if you're, if you're looking at a board and saying, hey, this is a bluebonnet, as an example.
No, these are children's books.
Well, I think we're still talking about the seed planting and the educational component too.
Yeah, they got a little sign there that says, what, what seed is it?
Maybe I don't understand what a storyboard is. I was visiting it, like, you go to, you go to a, a national park that has like a placard that says, this is what, this is the habitat of a horned toad, and this is what it is, and this is what, how it likes to live, and it likes it, and you're like, oh, that's cool. You look around, do I see one?
They didn't really tell us exactly what was going to be on it.
They, they never.
They, they didn't really tell us what was, what the educational component was going to be as what, as to what was going to be on the.
We have a person that's going to do that.
Who's going to do that. So we're talking about two different grants. I'm going to talk about the second grant in just a minute.
We're headed.
So the first grant is the seed planting with the educational component, where we're going to spend $169 on signs.
And they're getting over $500 worth of seeds.
Signs.
Signs so that people don't mow, or I guess that's what those signs are.
Oh, my.
No mow.
How many signs do we have?
So there, there, there are some parks in New Braunfels, I know that they, they do signage, and they say, this is a native space, but there's, there's always something extra to it. It's like, this is the ecological history of.
The no-mow signs will also say what plants are there on the same, same size board.
But I, I got, what's the significance? You know, say, oh, here's a, I don't know, I don't know the name of flowers. A bluebonnet, here's a bluebonnet. What's the significance of, of a bluebonnet? You would, you would think you would have something that says, a bluebonnet is a state flower of Texas, adopted in 1893. It's been famously used for roadside pictures of family portraits. You know, something more, something there, there that, that gives context to the importance of the.
Sounds like they have somebody that is knowledgeable.
Ashley Guerrero is.
That's going to put that together, right?
There's somebody that does that together. And also, like, the different stages, there'll be a time when there's, it looks like it's a weed, but actually, that'll be when it's going to seed. And that's when you do not want to mow, that's when, when they're going to seed.
So is this a education just for the, our contracted service providers? Or are we trying to educate the public on these ecological features?
Educate the population on that.
It sounds like what we're doing is just having story time for a few kids about the plants, and it really isn't benefiting.
No, that's going to be the second one. So the second grant that she has not applied for yet until she gets our, the city's permission. So let me just ask on the first one, is everybody good with that, with the seed planting? And I'm going to go and look at these signs before I actually give the okay to order them, because if they just say no mow, I don't know.
I'm, I'm concerned about, I mean, we could spend $150 putting signs up that says no mow, but we're just telling ourselves not to come out. It's not doing, it's not doing anything for the public, right?
Well, hopefully they're not walking on it. If, if they see that it's, it's a higher height of grass or, or wildflowers there as opposed to where you can walk on something that's mowed, I would hope the public would decide for themselves.
So I have, I have the signs here, here's the signs, here's the signs.
Yeah, there you go. Once they get the educational thing.
There's three different signs.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, thank you, Ava.
Those are, those are nice.
I have not seen these signs.
And there'll also be like the name of the grant agency, it'll be on there.
So what's, there, there's a lot of educa, it's great that we have mainly blue sage and pink evening primrose, but what's the significance of it? It's, it's, it, you know, does, if we're doing, if we're going to spend money on signage, even if it's just a nominal amount, $150, we can put these signs up, whatever, but would it not be more worthwhile to spend $1,000 and give people context of why the black-eyed susan and the evening primrose are, are important ecological features for, for the native, for these native areas? Like, can we, can we make it, make that part of the park more like an exhibit? Instead of just a, please don't walk here.
They're going to do.
Well, well, not, not as a program activity, but as something that the public can walk through and experience for themselves.
That would have to be more along the lines of, say, a permanent kiosk, say, behind glass that, that you would walk past, say, on your way there.
Kiosk, or like you have a national park that have, you know, plastic boards.
If you go to Peace Park up in Austin, okay, which I was just there a couple months ago with my daughter, they actually have to eliminate this mowing because they're doing the same thing, they're doing native gardening, and they, so they basically do a retention area with a mesh. That's their solution for do not trample, because that's the other thing, if you don't have some other barrier, the public is just going to walk over, which you really don't want them to be doing it at the time of the, after the planting. So that, what you're, just the sign's not going to do it. The second point is, they actually have signs that address what you're, what you're alluding to is, there has to be, the educational component is like, okay, this is, we planted bluebonnets here, they attract, and there's some type of education, the second level of information.
Talk about the monarchs and how they migrate from Mexico and back and forth.
And that's what they do, and if Peace Park is set up, that whole Barnes Creek, you know, area that's been, Chalk Creek that's been flooded, that's what they've done.
We're going after the ranch, let's, let's go after it, you know?
Or like, you know, we go to Big Bend or in kind of the public garden. They actually have the species, they have the shrub or the cactus, they specifically say, this is this.
The ladybird garden. The the ladybird garden.
Yeah, they'll be a more permanent.
Yes.
A more permanent. I like that idea. Something that you can make permanent and possibly secure enough it would handle a flood.
Okay, I'll remember that when we talk about storyboards.
Yeah.
Okay, so the second grant, so this is what Carol presented to us yesterday, the first one. And so the fraternity is going to help spread the seed. But Carol was kind of in a bad mood yesterday and she didn't allow any I'm sorry, but she didn't allow any discussion like what we're saying right now. Like the back and forth. It was like I've ordered these signs and can the city go pay for them? And so then we went into the second, the second thing where she was asking for the storyboards and they would be permanent. And they would be in concrete. And the library would be in charge of them, but they're in the park. So it would be something where if you had an educational component, this grant doesn't go with that grant. I mean, it possibly could. But her idea was that you would have a story from a book, a storybook that would be laid out. Now, the second part of this is if you have this, if she gets this, she's wants the city to make a cement walkway that would be ADA compliant.
Oh, that's way.
And I understand why she's asking this. Because if you had a child in a stroller or someone like her that's using a walker or something like that. I mean, it's it's not unreasonable.
If you got a grant.
But I understand what she's asking.
She's going to she's going to go for a twenty thousand dollar grant. That should cover all that paving that is ADA compliant.
We can get Gary Jobport to do a lot of them.
Back to the point, I agree with Jared here. Make it a comp as an education for adults too, like native plants, shrubs. And actually say, hey, I've I've got a piece of property. I want to make it native. Oh, what kind of plant is that? And it specifically shows and that you want to go to the next level and have shrubs and trees or whatever.
Okay.
And and I'll look at it. So with like he said, we want to take it to the next level and instead of going for these temporary signs that aren't going to last long term, do we go ahead and and make it a little more expensive? It has something permanent.
And the sager bought for the.
I understand the seed, but I'm saying to to describe what the flowers are and it could be there permanently. Exhibit, exactly. And that way, when you have a flood event, if the sign will will be there and is replanted. So.
Or even if it washes away, you buy a new sign. If we don't want that, we're going to try to anchor these.
Yeah, we have a fun garden. Like you said, a natural park, something that's permanent, you know, spend the money because these signs like you got aren't in there. You're going to last one season.
Let's talk about the second grant. If it's.
We're talking about two different grants.
If it's like a walking path, asphalt walking path. And then here's a post that says number one and it's just for the library to come read a book at post number one.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of additional benefit.
Wait a minute. Okay, you got your story there laid out for the little kid to read. There'll also be a little thing at the bottom that says this is X number plant. There's a bluebonnet. Uh, this tree over here is a con tree.
Well, we're gonna you're gonna have to pitch this to visualize it to the public.
You know, yeah, it it's it has to be, you know, I agree with you that was great, but it has to be. It has to be like a botanical garden or anything with where the, you know, you have the signs. I mean, I we go all the time. I mean, we go and hey, we want to plant that. We want that particular plant because it's native and it's drought resistant. So it it helps it helps the.
Okay, we're not the ladybird Johnson wildfires.
Well, let's let's go like like Jared said, let's let's go for it. Let's let if we're going to.
Okay, we want to have something for children.
Well, this is for just for everyone.
Okay.
This is not for we're not they're not we're not taking children. I mean, but it's multi-use that all people can use and all people can educate. You're always worried.
That way that way it's not some not a artifact in the park, a permanent artifact in the park that's only benefiting a library programming activity.
It's.
Adults can come along and read read the same things too and benefit from that if the grant that we could possibly get to have some kind of pathway there, which we don't have the money in our budget currently to do nothing. And if they have a grant to make a pathway, I am agreeing with that. Okay?
I don't care what the plaque says.
And 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 not only will the wildflowers be there, but there's secondary effects to where people will want to come and not only see the wildflowers, they'll want to see the butterflies. Butterfly protected at the San Antonio Botanical Garden.
Exactly.
It's bringing thousands of people. And also the hummingbirds will will come. So it it does have a secondary sort of ripple effect. But then when we as a city have to accommodate that ripple effect, then we're talking about more people coming here to park, which we'll talk talk about if we have time time today. So, yeah, that's, I mean.
I am, yeah, I love the idea.
If it's if it's not an exhibit, what's the point?
Like I agree.
It is an exhibit.
You know, in Lockhart State Park, they have a little book out about the owl in winter and it was fun.
I think it's hard. We're all on the same page. We want it. It's an education.
Explain that to me. So they they.
You put chapters of a book or if it's a children's book, they put it under glass?
No, they laminated. They did it really inexpensively. And so they had Velcro so they could change it out. But they took pages of a book and photocopied it and then laminated the two pages together and then Velcroed it to this stand that was all real short for little kids.
Yeah.
And then you would walk a few steps and then it have.
Get to the next page.
Pages of the book and and so it was.
And the book was related to nature.
What about can we? We talked we talked about it. What about on the plaques? Just getting getting with the times and just put a QR code and we can ever could be ever changing.
Hey, if you're two years old, three years old, we're not going to have QR.
But you're going to have a parent that can do a QR code.
Can I make a suggestion this far? How about if we do the do the exhibits and then have the brochure for the whatever your, you know, storybook? Have a brochure that you hand out like at City Hall of the Library and said, here, we have this this garden of wildflowers. Here is a brochure that you take with you like they do at the national parks. You take that brochure and they say, oh, here's exhibit one, exhibit two, then you take that piece of paper and you and you walk along with it.
What I I'm I'm I don't really understand what the whole holdup is here. I'm I'm kind of confused on why like why is it so bad to beautify one of our parks if we if they're putting in the work, do it. Let them do that. And if we're going to get some infrastructure out of the deal? I don't know what I don't know what I don't know what we're sitting here debating about.
We're not we're not we're not debating or discussing. That's what I I like.
We're getting a vote on it today.
I know. I know. I don't.
The grant didn't cover the cement sidewalk. I think there's the.
Okay, that's a different stuff. If I'm saying I agree with Jerry here, if we're going to do it, let's do it right. Let's do let's do a plaque that it lasts it'll last.
What's what's the library need from the city?
Before they put any of their resources into and time, which is probably the most important resource. And any effort to pursue a grant that would install a bit of a sidewalk along the city park? They would also have to put these little poles to have information on it or books on it. So but before they do any of that, they just want to know if they were to pursue that grant, would the city accept it?
Probably. Most likely, yes.
Well, they're they're not trying to get a probably. They want to guess or no.
Well, it's 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 like it's a balance of the grant.
So what what we could do is get people from the library to bring the parameters of the grant.
Sure.
The grant may be that it has to target education for children and we can't do a universal and everybody. Biology about the.
If it turns into something, we want to do more afterwards.
So let's just let's just ask for what are the parameters of the grant? How can we work together revolving the grant? Because if we're talking about something that we don't even know we could do with this grant because we don't know the restrictions and the guidelines? And let's get them to come.
Sure.
What what the guidelines are.
Sounds great.
You know.
Is everybody good with that?
Love it.
Do you know, Mary Beth, what the parameters of the grant?
No, other than it has to have an educational component.
Yeah, that's amazing.
The ones that we apply.
So if it's a twenty thousand dollar grant, what does that cover? I can't remember what these dad.
You have to buy the copyright for the book and we already have a couple of books that have the copyright. You have to buy the little pages that are, I think they're already laminated, you know, ready to go. Um, and building the stands, we were going to try to get Gary Jobport to do the concrete and also there's the metal working people out there can do the the metal stands. We're talking, you know, something that that tall.
So did the twenty thousand cover the sidewalk? I thought she said.
She she said that it did. That's why it's so. She wants to make sure that we are open to kind of surrendering some of our public property of park and putting something on top of it. Because there's always going to be conversation about, oh, well, it's an involuntary floodway.
Well, that's I I don't want to be it's not I don't want to be obstructionist by no means. I'm in for this, but they they have, you know, this is all FEMA buyout land. You've got it's got to be impervious.
But you got to read the deed restrictions on that.
I mean, I'm not going to I'm not.
Well, I think of sidewalk you could do that.
I'm not. Well, they have they have, you know, they have pervious stones. That's not my I'm not going to make an issue.
We would just apply whatever the ordinance requires.
I think it's a great idea.
Let's read out what the parameters are before we start renegotiating how this is going to look in the future.
It also gets people who can't get down to the river to our parks.
I agree.
Able to get down to the river.
No, this wouldn't go to.
Well, close enough to the river because right now nobody on nobody with ADA limitations is going to even get close to the river right there. So.
This heart, how wide is the sidewalk you're talking about?
But also we have to remember that if we're providing a concrete trail from a certain location in the parking lot, the parking lot has to also be upgraded to to supply paved three car wide ADA compliant parking. So then the city is now jumping into having to provide that A ADA.
Yeah, you start going. That's what she said when we did the.
Sam, god dang it.
When she came and did the talk from the ADA, she said, once you start upgrading and building and you do one thing, you've got to do it all.
Yeah. So is this is this?
So.
But this is.
Should we even take it? No, should we even take it to city count?
I think we need to establish that understanding because if this is a way to back and create.
That's what I'm afraid of.
City. We want zero part on this.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of.
I agree with you.
Because we have had those notions and concerns expressed to us with seriously about very the concerns about that.
So she might.
And and people have been put this way, cities have been put on notice regarding those concerns. And unless unless we're.
Aid for that too, though?
No.
It wasn't.
It's purely punitive.
Is it?
How about we talk with those people as well?
What's what's funny is they're very closely related and no pun.
Let's work around it. Let's not talk to that same person. Let's go and talk to someone from the I would prefer. Ranch and get their get get a concept of, hey, pursue this grant. We get this sidewalk. We have not started this year.
Let's presume that no good deed goes unpunished.
Where it would probably have to be.
Let's get those three parties involved. Fine, library.
This is this we we might want we might want Kent at some point. I think I think we need to approach an inquiry on two different tracks. Find out what 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 ride is. I don't want to get I don't want to get the enforcement side negotiating with the library and the city stuck in the middle.
What makes it if we do if we do get the paved sidewalk? What makes it ADA compliant?
Oh, because if you could do a wheelchair on it.
Sure.
Or you could walk without.
Announcing that it's ADA compliant.
We we have a number of stakeholders in the community who have closely monitored our 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 infrastructure in the parks that have made it pretty clear.
We put that runway there, they'll they'll be like, well, that's ADA compliant. I need mine.
I need everything else to be.
ADA compliant.
Parking lot ADA compliant. I need the the swing set ADA compliant. I need the bathroom, the bathroom. It it it.
Parking spaces.
If it goes that I'm concerned. I'm I there's enough. There's enough of a there there that we need to figure that out.
Totally agree. You're going to law school, by the way, because you're already going. You're going. You're getting educated right now.
I'm I'm pretty much in 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 agreement with the signage, though. I I think that's a passive way to start and and to work can't end in with with the sea planting.
Oh, yeah, that's yes, it's.
That's going to be very e easy thing, but this path path pathway which we'll talk about in our own last topic is about maintenance. So.
We're with you, Miss Harper. We're agreeing. We're for we're for a wall. We're wall. We're for it. We just got to cover our butts.
We mean, right now it's not ADA compliant because you cannot pave it because it's FEMA buyout land. Is that correct?
No.
That's not true.
It's not ADA compliant because we don't have the financial resources to improve it. It's basically.
And and I'm assuming that someone in the past who was on city council looked and figured out how much it was going to be to do that for the parks. We have a number involved with how much money it would be to make that parking lot ADA compliant?
I I'm not aware of a of a current estimate of off the top of my head, it would be in the tens of thousands of dollars approaching maybe a hundred thousand dollars.
Just take you to permeable favor favors and would be.
Yeah, well, there's there's a lot of approaches. We would have to get with specialists in that area and that field to to really figure that out, but as it as it stands now, without any external funding being applied to that problem, there's 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 nothing feasible that we can do.
There's nothing in the budget to handle it.
Is there like earlier we were talking about primitive? I wonder if our parks could have considered primitive.
That's that's kind of been the approach that that we've taken with with phase one and is saying that's a primitive river access point. Um, we're calling it a park, but it's it's not intended to to create any sort of public amenity other than that. Um, Allen Bates River Access is is in the same boat. It's a primitive river access point. The the playground equipment was was a donation to the city and I think that might have I I'm not I'm not sure the timing of how all that got put in and adopted as a park and all that, but it wasn't. I don't believe it was a publicly or Martindale funded project. So.
I think they promised the family that they would turn it into a park.
Oh, you know, all I know about I don't know about Allen Bates, but I know phase one, that was all FEMA buyout from ninety eight. And it is in in the FEMA that if it's FEMA buyout land given to a city that we cannot do anything. I mean, we can put livestock. We can put roads, but they have to be like road base. It has it cannot be concrete, asphalt, any of that. So Allen Bates, I don't know. But those two, if it's by, if it's not by out, it's probably different. And Allen Bates, man, I'm trying to.
Gargiola is buyout though.
But it's not in the floodway.
I don't know. That's all I know is all I know is the ones in our floodway that we 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 recently converted city land to parkland. That is that is no asphalt or concrete. Allen Bates is different. I don't really know the history. I get I guess, does anybody know? I know it was here. Was it a? I don't know if it was buyout land. I don't think it was, but I'm not sure. We have to check it.
When you concrete here or not?
Well, you can. I know you can in phase one because that's a buyout. That was FEMA buyout. Now, Allen Bates, man, I I know there was contributions on that one.
Are you busy?
I think it's I think it's.
I can.
I think it's because I remember there was donations given. Um, so I'm I I would venture to say that that was probably not a buyout, FEMA buyout.
And that's property.
The Allen Bates Park, yes. But the rest of the phase one, I know for sure.
Okay.
So, hey, thank you.
Thank you.
So our last topic, oh, I think it's going to be hard.
Okay, can I can I start with it, please? Okay.
What is it?
Parks, maintenance and.
Revenue.
Revenue.
Okay, uh unless you have something prepared first.
I do.
Uh can I just then just touch, touch, touch on this? Okay, so what what I've seen in terms of the nineteen thousand dollars per year that we have for the parks, if if you look at Al- Al- Allen Bates mowing, say, if you mowed it twelve times a year, times two hundred and fifty dollars, that's about three thousand dollars. Our deal apart is about fifteen hundred. Phase one is about two thousand seven hundred and fifty. The triangle is also about uh two thousand dollars. I added all that up and I came up with roughly about ten thousand two hundred dollars per year on on the mowing. Um if you did pay somebody to do the maintenance, say, if you paid them uh what they worked forty hours a week and you paid them two hundred dollars a week, say, that's about eight thousand dollars. So we're talking about eight to nine thousand dollars in terms of the maintenance now. Um somebody, and this is just gonna be a list of the things that the volunteers and the friends of the park has done. We've installed concrete pads for the garbage cans. We painted them. Uh we purchased the uh liners. Uh also, we removed cables in the parking lot and installed the new yellow cables that are visible, that it is not a trip hazard now. We installed more poles. We arranged the delivery of the mulch and spread it, spread it in the play playground. And you have to blow the leaves off in order to not create weeds. We weeded that. We checked the playground equipment, the tables and the benches for for defects. We have cleaned, power sprayed the benches and the tables. We've watered, mulched, stayed trimmed and fertilized the trees and shrub. We weed whacked the hillsides, the fence lines, the pathways around the playground, the benches. We've got pick pickup truckloads of garbage for six months from April to September. We purchased lights. We've replaced the plugs. We've installed signage. These are all things that I have done. Installed the signage. I picked up the signs. I repaired the split rail fence at Gardeola Park. And I arranged for the installation of a part of the faucet and the meter at the guard at Gardeola Park. So even looking at the nineteen thousand dollars, yes, that covers the maintenance, but that does not cover the purchase of the mulch or to do any improvement, so.
We increased the budget.
But 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 I I just mentioned that the mowing is about ten thousand bucks a month and the maintenance
Year.
is a a year and that's even the lowing. So what what has happened in San Marcos is that they want to start to charge parking in their city park. They're gonna designate two hundred and forty one spaces in their park system to a kiosk paying proposition. They were gonna start at May first, but now they've decided to wait until the falls because they have to get all the players involved that uh is the Parks and Rec system and the the police. So what they're gonna do is start it in the fall now. The kiosks are roughly costing about forty thousand dollars. It 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 is a company that's called Flow Bark, F L O B A R K. They are going to arrange for those kiosks. Um the uh way it's gonna work is that you pay, there there's gonna be five kiosks that are for credit card and one for cash. San Marcos re- residents can uh install their license plate and not be charged. The police are gonna walk around with scanners that are gonna scan the license plates parked in the parking lot that'll link up to the kiosk because when they pay, they are not gonna have a little receipt that they put on your dash. And so um the uh parking there is gonna be thirty minutes or less is free, ten dollars up to four hours. If it's four hours or more, it's fifteen dollars and it's gonna be twenty five dollars parking on holidays. And so.
That weekends, just holidays?
No, just just how on the holiday.
Well, special events. I think that's what I read.
Special events. So they're looking at two hundred and forty spaces for parking.
This is that city park, right?
Yes.
The Marcus.
Yes. And so we need to think of a way because now in our ordinance that we have in Allen Bates Park, the only thing it says is that if you use the area between the parking lot and the playground and you hook up to the electricity to have a function there, that amount of money that an individual pays is to be determined by city council. We have not determined that as the city council, how much we would charge in order to increase money that we need in our our park. So now we we're talk talking about possibly charging the park. How are we gonna enforce that? How are we gonna do this? And that's all I'm gonna say is that in order to either increase our budget to improve the infrastructure of the parks, we need that because the nineteen thousand dollars we have now barely covers the mowing and the maintenance. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clay.
And I want to thank the friends of the park and the volunteers, Jeff, Sean and myself and Pat Wilkins that has maintained Gardeola Park for over twenty years. So and it's my passion, so that's that's why I get get a little involved about it because I go by that park every day. Out of all of us in in the room, I think I'm one of the main people that goes by that park, that goes by it and waters the trees and and do all this stuff. I want to see more passion. I want to see more volunteers. I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
We do appreciate it. We are a park expert.
So now I'm ready for the for the presentation. I'm done. That's 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 my.
That covers it. We can go home. Um no, I let's, let's go.
Something real quick?
Yes.
Thank you, Sam. We appreciate you. But the other thing I wanted to add was um my son and I have driven the little electric cars that they have downtown in San Marcos. And one of the big pickup spots is a parking lot that they have that is across from um City Park or where they have sights and sounds. And we pick up there and drop people off in different places and that that um they have to scan their or input their information. It's kind of an app and they have to do exactly like Sam was talking about. And it is busy all the time. People pay for parking and they use the little carts or Uber or whatever to get around or walk around town. And I mean, people don't seem to have a problem using the app and people don't seem to have a problem paying for parking.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that input.
So um Parks and Rec, city council workshop, let's get after it. Uh this is our inspiration from Leslie Nope. If you don't know who she is, she is the queen of Parks and Rec. On um, used to be on NBC. It was a television show. Um and her her comedic shtick is always, you know, positive in in every respect. So uh I thought this is a good quote, good meme. Let's let's break out a map, not the old out of date one that shows where we've been, but a crisp new one that shows where we might go. That's what we're here today. Let's embark on a new journey together, see where it takes us.
Inspire.
Inspire. Teamwork. So yeah, that's what we're gonna talk about. We already covered the last three things on this agenda, so we just wanna hit the the first bullet. Um so park maintenance, I think what we, when it comes to where we're trying to go, what what I think what we should try to, my recommendation for city council is to, in this limited amount of time that we have together, let's talk about the ends, ways and means. What are we trying to achieve? How do we, how might we achieve that? And what ways, what resources are we gonna bring to bear to implement those actions uh going forward? The first step of that, though, is defining our goals. In some ways, you have to define the problem to know what you're trying to solve. Um so without getting into um the the pay for parking or other things, I think it's worth keeping in mind, what are we, what are we hoping to solve in this? And I think there's a few few things. So go ahead and hit next. Amenities upkeep, you know, it, the, a lot of the things that Sam has graciously volunteered his his heart, soul, time, um and others who who have worked with him. Um and there haven't, haven't been a lot of people, but I know that there's a a good amount of volunteers and just keeping the amenities up to date. The painting the basketball court has been an issue that's that's been raised my attention. The mulch has been a big one, the the trees becoming dangerous to to those amenities. Um hit next. Uh trash is frequently an issue, especially in the phase one area, um as we experienced last summer. Kind of touched on it earlier when we talked about the Skull Road, trash and and accumulation of of those things is is often a problem. Go ahead and hit next.
Especially in the spring.
Yeah. Especially in the spring, in the early parts of summer, May, June, a little bit in July. August can still be bad, but I think people kind of peter out by then to a some degree. Um overcrowding, we discussed this at Skull Road. It's becomes a big issue down at the phase one uh park and even down in the summers, um overcrowding our our parking spaces at Allen Bates and the river down, down from there. Um go ahead and hit next. Disability accommodations, we kind of touched on that a little bit. A lot of concerns there.
Next.
Solid concerns. Next. Landscapes, um the the flowers, the the native flowers and the mowing requirements. And maintaining our landscapes on that next. Rules, park rules are, where are we trying to define our maintenance through the rule? Is it um are rules well defined or not? And next, safety. Is it, you know, swimmer safety, lighting, pedestrian safety? Next. Sinage, um are we trying to improve park maintenance through through signage of some sort? Next. We're looking at expansion. We have these phase ones, phase twos, phase threes. Are we trying to make use of those green spaces in the future? And then um last one is others, is.
Is others.
There's, there's a lot of other park maintenance issues that that I think we come to the table with. At this point, let's just talk broadly, what other things? You know, anything on here you don't agree with, other things you you wanna expand upon or other things we haven't mentioned on this slide that you think is a parks maintenance?
Well, when I first became mayor, one of the things we talked about was maybe putting it out for a bid and just paying year round, paying a set amount of money to have somebody mow. But what if we expanded that? And I don't know what that dollar amount would look like, but expanded that to not only mow but water. You know, we don't have a parks department, but if you had somebody that could pick up the garbage, bring it over to. I mean, in Allen Bates, we have trash pickup, but at phase one, they won't pick it up. Plus, we were worried about getting a dumpster just filled up if we put a dumpster there.
Because we don't have anybody maintaining it either.
Right. So I mean, that's one idea is that we would hire somebody for a set amount each month and just.
Some, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to that one next.
Okay.
But what might those people be doing? Be doing? What problem are they solving?
Well, some of the things that that I described, like checking the playground equipment for safety, checking the benches and the tables and see that they're all bolted right together because now we've got them unbolted and they're, they aren't bolted. Cleaning those, power spraying those benches and tables. Um weed whacking along the sides and the slope down, down towards the uh.
Yeah, not just mowing.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's almost, what I figured out, fifty two weeks in a year, you could easily have someone work here forty weeks out of the year doing things that are easier now, like trimming down small trees, uh expanding places to mow. I mean, there's plenty of maintenance uh other than worrying about just the garbage during.
So really what you're asking is, we just need a bullet points. We just need it all listed out of the duties, the checklist of what the park needs, really. And if we can have that defined, then we can maybe put a role behind that. And then we gotta figure out how much we could pay that all. Then we're kind of working the equation backwards and how much the how much does the city need to be taking off this parking? Yeah. And that's, that's really what we're doing here. So.
Is there any other problems that that we need to address in the parks, parking?
The uh parking lot at Bates is too small and even though in phase one, that that we did gravel and parking for about twenty five spaces in the last summer, if you look down there, there was easily, easily sixty.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, tell me, how, how, how many cars down there in phase one at fifteen?
Oh, a hundred. Yeah, a hundred, a hundred? Yes, yes.
In phase one? In phase one?
There's a problem of garbage along the river too, especially in Allen Bates.
Well, we had.
People leave diapers.
Yeah, we had. I mean, that would be probably number, I mean, that'd be number one.
I was helping him and tried to, the dumpster, those three trash cans were, it was, it was not pretty. It was not pretty. I was down there walking the dog on Sunday morning helping him pick all that up, put it in the back of his truck. It was just absolutely disgusting.
Oh, yeah.
We were not.
How do you, I mean, what do you do?
So let's, let's, let's go to the next. Let's go to the next slide. What do you do? So um ex, you know, if we're looking at expansion, you mentioned parking. Um that's, that'd be kind of more, more parking facilities. Are we trying to, if our, if our maintenance issue is or other things are, you know, more or less river access, more or less land area for parks, um that's an action we could take as.
We're, we're working on it.
Yeah, right. Uh go ahead and hit next. But in 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 terms of amenities, um you know, additional materials like mulch or different materials, like going from a uh chain uh parking, uh chain basketball net versus a rope basketball net. As a small, you know, little example, are we looking at doing different materials that have, are more durable in what we're, what we're doing? Um or do we go from a mulch playground um bottom to a rubber composite playground bottom?
Well, we can't do do that in the floodway because if it floods, then all that rubber tire mulch is 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 gonna.
Well, it it maybe it's not rubber tire mulch, maybe it's a a solid surface. Um rubber, rubber, that kind of, Landmark has one.
Yeah.
And what's ADA compliant?
And then what gets NDA compliant and those things. So um go ahead and hit next. The trash, we kind of touched on some, some of this.
Um.
You know, we talked about, the mayor mentioned a contract. We contract for the trash pickup. Do we, as Sam mentioned, volunteers, are we gonna rely on volunteers to do trash pickup? Are we gonna hire an employee or employees to do trash pickup? Or another option to to address trash is doing signage, leave no trace type of signage like you see in in National Forest um areas.
Take it in, take it out.
Pack it out. Um or do we address the issue of trash through police enforcement? And um close monitoring and ticketing, littering and and those things. Uh go ahead and hit next. On disability accommodations, do we address that through new equipment and upgraded facilities? There, I, probably the only way to address it is we either the, one of those two options. Hit next. Landscape, do we solve some of those mowing problems by creating natural mu- no mow areas? And let let's more of our parks instead being mowed, become native, native spaces and reduce some cost there? Or do we address?
What we just did.
It's some, well, it's only six feet, right? That's really, that's, that's tiny. That's hmm maybe a little bit longer than the width, the length of that desk. Um you know, or do we addressing landscaping through volunteers or contract employees to do the maintenance and or employees?
It's harder, it's hard to say yes to all that or any of that without knowing.
Right.
Money.
Well, we're gonna, we're, we're, we're fastly getting to that point. Um next, go ahead and hit next, uh one more time.
Hurry up, everybody.
Rules, enforcement, you know, do we address the rule issue? Note, you know, intoxication, public intoxication, or is it um merely open container? How do we enforce that? The can ban, how do we enforce that in the parks? Do we, is, are we going to do that through a police response? Are we going to try to do that through a cultural shift response through?
Already doing that?
Well, yeah, but it's, it's a matter of what, what problems you're trying to solve and how and how you're gonna try to solve them. And how, and how you're going to try to solve them, so if your problem is a rules, do you try to? Enforce the rules or or get people to adopt those rules and internalize them and and go forward with that? What are other actions that the city could take to address some of the problems we we've discussed?
I'll say it. Bring in others, create a regional park, so it's not all.
What would the regional park do? What action would the regional park take, cause we're gonna get, cause that's a means. That's a means to an end is having a regional park, but what would the regional park action be?
Oh, I could, I could go down the list, I mean, regional park, like Blue Ball, you have, instead of Little City of Martindale, we have Texas Parks Wildlife.
What would they be doing, as in terms of action?
They, okay, they would be first of all acquiring land and they would have, for example, gay wardens, sheriff's department. Tom, you helped me on this, you can have a combination of both. Biggest thing is money, infrastructure, then you could do ADA, you could do all that and grant riders. You have grant riders, you got the River Foundation.
What property?
Would the regional park give that maintenance responsibility to the county?
I don't know, you know, I really don't know.
What property would they acquire?
Well, we're working on one right now.
So it kind of, those things you mentioned, acquire land, it's an expansion, more enforcement. That kind of goes to the trash and the rules piece, the infrastructure upgrades, kind of amenities, ADA. Um, grant rider, I don't think that's one that we have up here, is, um. Action to take is, is a grant rider, that's something that I, I think that's worthwhile, what other actions?
I like what you were saying earlier, though, that's, that's a twenty twenty eight scheme, that is. Way down the road.
New map, we're, we're, this is a brainstorming, non-resourced constrained. Where, what are we trying to, to go, could be tomorrow, could be twenty twenty.
If we do ba- bu- bu- baby steps.
Let's go to the next slide. Alright, I think this is where a lot of people want to focus on, cause it's, it's more tangible, right? What resources might we use to solve these problems?
I understand, I understand what you're doing right now.
What can we do today, what are those things that are free or or mostly free within our budget? We can do policy changes. Yeah, yeah, that could be, yeah, that'd be probably mostly free, um, policy changes, yeah, charge for parking. Volunteers to to get more trash, um, we can do less of something like mowing, we could do less mowing. Yeah, maybe not even have trash cash, trash cans, um, maybe reprioritizing priorities, you know, with city staff or police. You know, less, less traffic patrol, more, more close patrols of city parks, almost like a park ranger type of, uh. Of an enforcement, um, footing, or at least on a more frequent basis, I know they already go down there to the parks a lot, but. No, no, using, reprioritizing, um, you know, the city council, working with the chief of police. To, to kind of set up, set expectations on, let's have the police officers do coast patrols. Every hour instead of every two or three hours that they do now, um, and to to try to. Address the littering or address the public intoxication or or other things that might be going on.
I don't really want to tie him up for, are you talking about on the weekends?
I'm talking, I'm talking about, this is boom, up here, up here. We have a list of problems, we have a list of actions we can take. Now we're looking at what resources can we bring to bear, and then our next part's going to be marrying up the three. Here's what my, here's what's affordable or maybe affordable, maybe being affordable, like we don't know what the exact cost is, but probably within our. Signage, so we talked about, we can, we likely can afford signs. Maybe affordable, likely affordable culture shift, leaving no trace, that ties into signage. Um, but also goes into to marketing and other things that that the city could do. To create a culture of leave no trace in our city parks, keeping them primitive, the National Forest Service does a pretty good job of that. And and other areas that that rely on leave no trace item. Some of it is kind of dictated by the people who frequent those places, you know. Some of us may like to go into a primitive campsite where it's pack in, pack out, and that's all you do. Some people don't do that and they may not be familiar with that culture, uh, but what can we do to actions, what?
Everything's packed out.
Yeah, everything, or you're digging a hole. Yeah, so what, one of the things we could do to help facilitate that in terms of an expense is. Having trash bag kiosks where people could, if you forgot to bring your trash bag, walk over, there's a bunch of trash bags on a post, take one with you, pack up your stuff, take it out. Um, newer, different materials, depending on what we're looking at. Uh, small scale upgrades, we can't do anything real large, but we can do, we can do small things, basic landscape, which is what we have. Basically now, um, occasional litter control services, this goes kind of like last summer, we have somebody go down once, maybe twice a week. On a contract, or do we look at doing a commercial dumpster? Um, in these, in these spaces to provide, that way we don't have trash can overflow issues. Um, creates other problems, but it's something that that could be used. And then hit the next button. Outside resources, these are things, this is, this are how we might also solve the problems, grants. Interlocal slash state partnerships, revenue generating enterprises like parking, um. Fees and other things.
How can we put parking meters all over the city?
I love that idea, um, I honestly do love that idea.
Makes sense.
Hit next twice. So, what problems can we solve today with these resource? And what problems do we hope to solve tomorrow? Um, let's go ahead, let's pause, are there other things, brainstorm? What, what other things might be free, maybe affordable, maybe outside resources, what other things might the city do to bring to bear?
You can rent the, the space for an, an event.
Yeah, that's, that's what I had mentioned in the or ordinance that we currently have, there's no designated. Monetary charge of what you would do to have a bouncy house and have a birthday party. To have an art festival at the park, have a music festival, I mean. We could even possibly lease land from the Callaway property that's adjacent to the park, lease that land from him. And have more, more park. He's complaining how much he's spending on taxes right now, and it's just sitting there, he can't do anything with it. But we've seen when we've had Fourth of July, that we've had overflow parking in the park, what, what was that?
How much property is it? Is it not five acres?
No, it's three and a half.
You can do as a conservation needsman.
Makes a good time to add this, uh, you know, right now, we do have a can ban, we do have an alcohol ban. And if we had requirement for paid parking, that would be another one. You know, a lot of these people, but they gotta pay and they want to go hang out and drink beer, we don't want those people anymore, I mean. That would eliminate some of it if, if you had a.
I'm all about scarcity, especially with business. It's like, if you have a s- a resource and people want it, and if we limit that, there's scarcity and we will, I mean, we'll make money. And we can set the price there.
Let, let me, we'll be back up. I mean, I was sorry for my. Behavior earlier, but, uh, I've been going down this road for eight, nine years, you know, we've been, Tom, I, I've known him for forty some year. You know, don't invent, reinvent the wheel, you got like the state parks, for example, they, they have no. You cannot drink, open container, you cannot drink openly, if you got a can of beer and you're drinking it. They're gonna, they're gonna nail you, but if you put it in a cup and you're discreet, you know.
Well, that's the same way our.
So what I'm saying is, you interface it with a can ban, where if you got a g- a, a non-disposable container. And you're drinking the beer and you're behaving yourself, who's gonna know the difference anyway, I mean, that's, that's just another quiver. For the police and say, you had that and then you had the thing about paying, paying, if you gotta pay. I think we should follow Sam Marcus, you gotta pay ten bucks for four hours or fifteen. You know, the guys that want to drink a beer and try to throw the cans everywhere, they're gonna go down to Staples Bridge, they're not gonna come here. You know what I'm saying, but if somebody wants to take their family and.
Have you been down to Staples Bridge lately? He's cleaned that thing up.
I'm saying is, ventures have been, ventures have been a huge problem. They're paying, they're charging people now, I mean, every, everywhere there's public access is a problem. You go, you paddle down the river, every place you go, under a bridge, any place you, there's garbage and trash everywhere. And that's the problem we're having here, and I mean, so.
Got to corral it.
San Marcos is even putting the trash cans in boats in the middle of the river.
But again, that's, that's another one to solve if you charge, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I a hundred percent.
So, yeah, well, I think some of the things we mentioned, um, our policy is a policy change about setting the rents. Um, and event rentals is, is part of those revenue generating enterprises. The lease is something we haven't considered here, if our, if our issue is expansion, leasing land instead of. Um, purchasing land is, I think, a good, good option. Anything else?
But where are we gonna get the money to?
Well, that's when it comes to county. Other players.
Let's go ahead, next. Alright, um, go, the next one, so we're gonna talk about revenue drain rating enterprises in two stages, one. What can the city do passively to generate revenue, and the next, what can we, the city do actively to generate revenue? First one up is parking meters, hit next again, so. The way that I, I propose that the city approach this parking meters, focus just on meters, not passes. Is using Park Mobile, Park Mobile's used in New Braunfels, it is used at most metropolitans across the ca- the country. When I lived in the Washington DC, it was, they went exclusively to Park Mobile, no coing based machines anymore. Have that, it's, it's super easy to use, type in your number, boom, you pay. New Braunfels uses a, a flat fee, others, we heard talk about earlier, San Marcos using a more of a, um.
So, all we're talking about is an expense of the city is putting a sign up with that three oh five zero one, and you get your, get on your phone.
It, it may, yeah, even if that's, that might not even be an expense to the city, that might be a benefit to sign a contract with Park Mobile. Because Park Mobile gets thirty five cents per transaction.
I got it, cause the chaos thing in San Marcos, that's gonna cost a fortune.
For, there's a number of reasons why that's not, not viable for the city, first is the flood areas. This, the second is, um, they're, we're in a pretty remote area, they're just subject to vandalism. Something like, something like this, you, you take, it is one hundred percent your fault, the only downside, I can think of with this one is. Martindale stinks for cell coverage. And, and how to pay, the, on the enforcement side, the, the police department would have the ability to see the backend. And so, um, enforcement side, we'd have to use either employees of of some kind or a police department. Um, to do parking enforcement, and they would see through their interface on, on the enforcement side, what. Drivers', um, license plates have paid and what's happened, and they would just be able to pull up the app. X, X, Y, two, three, two, didn't pay, here's a ticket, these other ones have, alright, go back. Come by around an hour later, take a check, this person, right, yeah, so that, that.
New Braunfels, you should bring up New Braunfels and San Marcos, right? San Marcos has a police agency that totally does that. They have eighteen people, that, that's their whole purpose of mind, right? So, but that's what they do. I agree that we need to do this, a- and I've been looking at all kinds of things, right, a lot, a lot of things, kiosks and stuff, I think they're expensive. Thing with parking garage, if we can control what goes in with like armed gates or something like that, that's the main thing of all this is control. You gotta control the entry points, because if you have multiple entry points, how, how are you even checking on anything? People can drop through, they can drive through the ditch down there, right, and and get in, so we gotta control the entry and access. And once that's controlled, then you can put up these signs and do.
So we have to have some cover.
There's gotta be a, a initial entry point, because you're gonna have people parking right across the street, where we just talked about planting seeds. Go right over there and park and walk across.
But, I mean, if you have it for the city, if you're parking in a city and you have purchased that and you scan it, they don't have, they don't have it purchased through that, then it's.
Well, I come through and I write your car a ticket.
We're not concerned about that.
Yeah, we have zero teeth, I go write your car a ticket. Unless we go to, like I said, we might just say, hey, you know, you parked your car here, we're gonna tow it. Those are the things, if we're gonna be aggressive, us, we gotta do that.
This is from the perspective of generating revenue. We're gonna get to problem solving again later.
But you can't generate revenue with twenty people going in and parking, you decked up all your twenty foot parking spots.
You collect twenty parking tickets and you process them through the court. Help, help me explain, if I write, if you, if you write a parking ticket. The court, you go to the court, you don't pay it, it becomes a put out on your, or license, right?
No, it's not a moving traffic violation, so.
Alright, so they would just hang out.
They would hang out here.
Because if, if we have overflow parking from the parking lots that we're gonna pay, we're gonna find.
You tell me I can go to New Braunfels and just park and don't worry about ever paying.
They'll tell you if you have multiple offenses, I think at Texas State, if you park. If you have a s- over a certain amount of offenses, you get a boot in your, on your car and then they tow you. So, I mean, that's really how, really how they make their money.
Maybe that's what we do is, is at the multiple.
Then you have to pay, now you gotta pay all your, now you pay all your tickets, and then you gotta pay.
That's, that's what we get to policy, I think that's a good, good approach.
I just thought about something else, just thought about it, we talk about, now this is gonna be a reven- revenue potential for the city. We've got that, we do our cleanups, you could have a parking lot over there. But you gotta pay, now, if we can find a co- to use the technology along with your guys. And you gotta, if you wanna park over there and you use that, it, they're all gonna go to the river, if you're gonna use that as a parking lot. You've gotta pay fifteen dollars, twenty dollars a day.
You could do tw- you could do twenty dollars at Phase One and five dollars at Phase Three.
Also, we're about to have this brand new restaurant down here. Raining a bunch of cars that are going up and down this area.
Make it across the board, same rate, I think we should follow Sam Marcus, and we got that kind of technology, and you can interface with that. And, and whatever you say, you get warnings or whatever, but if. You, you could have, I can say, I, at one time, I was against park, having a parking lot down, that, if we do our brush cleanups. Then if we could have that regulated, you, you people, you have to charge and you have, you know, no can or no, no disposable cans.
Well, I get into rulemaking.
Okay, that's, I'm stumping around, but that could be a, a way to have paid parking and we get revenue, yeah?
I question though, using the triangle there and the safety involved, the people.
We're talking, we're talking about Phase One now.
No, we were talking about parking in the triangle where the brush is.
We could, we can get to how it gets implemented later.
We've already talked enough about skulls, I hear.
No, I'm not talking about skulls, I'm talking about the triangle at Southeast River Road in nineteen seventy.
Oh, okay, we're all talking.
Once we, yeah, I mean, obviously, you have to create some kind of safe, safe passage across that road, but that's down the road. If we even get to that point, say, okay, we can, we can, we can put something there to enforce.
That if we, if there's a parking issue here. And for the restaurants or everything else, and if we can make money and have a parking lot down there for the parks or whatever.
I think the biggest thing.
We can have revenue, we can have revenue for your parks.
Biggest thing that we haven't discussed is, how many people do we really want at the river? Biggest thing that we haven't discussed is, how many people do we really want at the river?
But, here, here you go though, see, we've got, here, here's about the rules. No alcohol. Can ban, and you have to pay, you have to pay.
Sure, sure.
That's gonna limit, that's gonna limit a lot of people.
But we, we still have, we have to look down, up and down these roads, how many people can park in this river or park in the city? And how many do we wanna allow at that river?
So you're, you're bringing up another problem that we might not address before is, well, we did address before, it's called overcrowding. It is overcrowding a problem we're gonna solve.
But.
Two restaurants that are gonna sell alcohol. But you know what they do in the national parks? They limit it by saying, if we, we reach the, the max, that's it.
But when you don't control your access to it.
Then you don't know.
It's full.
That's right.
That's what I'm saying, but, but y'all said, we gotta control the action.
How can we, how can we do this type of technology, but we, in your opinion, to do that type of technology, we have to have a, a barrier of some sort?
What, what's, what's, what's difficult is the public right of way access with the nineteen seventy nine bridge, fifty feet away.
I know, I know, but that's.
It's like, oh, if I park down in that gully, I have to pay twenty dollars, but if I just pull off the side of the road right here.
Problem, problem is, problem is, that's gonna fill, that's gonna fill up.
Well, then you do no parking and will.
No parking and force it with a tow.
And, 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 and.
I, I, I think you're right on the nineteen seventy nine, you force out with a tow.
Right.
And, and if you do park there and you do come to our parks, can ban, alcohol ban, it's already there. I know what I'm saying, that's an old quiver.
So you're getting the money, if you do a contract, all these no parking areas, if we contract with the towing company, and they come put their signs up and say, hey, no parking, you will be towed, there's a car there, they tow them. They're, we're gonna contract with them, so they're gonna pay us a P, P of that, when they come get their car back out, I don't know a number, a hun- hundred bucks, ten or.
Yeah, it's not much.
Right? So they, and then this city gets a fee on that, that wrecking service gets a fee, and then this, we automatically get a fee when they go with their car back.
Beautiful, love it.
So next.
Wow. Revenue generating.
Uh, seasonal parking passes, no parking without a permit. So, this is a little sticker, I think Galveston uses it on their, their website. Um, yeah, seasonal parking pass, people could buy seasonal parking pass that, we kinda touched on this a little bit, this whole thing earlier. Where they come in, the city, you apply, pay a, a fee, you get a seasonal pass. Now that you get free access into the, the parking areas and you can't access it without the pass. You could, you could.
Residents or non-resident?
Well, this is, I knew that point was coming.
Okay.
You could, you could do this, possibly get a little difficult on the enforcement side, but you could do it in conjunction, addition to or in place of the parking meters. Where you could do, you have to pay per parking twenty dollars a day, or you can buy a seasonal pass for two hundred forty dollars. And you're, you don't have to worry about it on your daily fee. And then if you're a local resident, we cut you a discount or maybe it's free.
No, 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 if, I've always insisted, if you're a resident, it's free.
There we go.
We, we make. San Marcos is free, right? If they're.
So, so you could, so you can make it free, it's a policy choice, but you can, you can use these passes.
Also, first thing in my head is bike racks. Bike racks in the, in the, uh, for the residents, if they don't wanna come down here and park and ride their bike down, lock their bike down on bike racks.
As an amenity.
How's, how are we gonna know if, if that, if that's a resident?
Well, they, they, they would, they would, they would have to get a pass.
You'd have to limit the passes per address too.
Yeah, they would have to provide a vehicle registration.
Their, their car is registered at that.
Address.
Yeah, it would have to be, it would be an application with a vehicle registration.
Okay.
Um, and then we'd be able to look them up to see if they're a utility customer.
Come on, he knows, he knows all our cars already.
So, uh, but, but then, if then at that point, you would, they would get, you go down there, you see on, no one paid in this parking zone, XX two, three, two. Oh, go to put a, a fee on their windshield, oh, they have pass. They don't have, then, then you don't give them a ticket, or, oh, they got a pass, so you don't, you don't get.
Hey, hey, explain the technology to me, so you text it on your phone?
No, you don't.
How, how do you, I mean, you, you.
You get, you get.
So.
So how do you, how does the officer know that they pay?
So here's, here's my Park Mobile app.
Yeah.
I open it up. It's, it might take me minutes, it's been a while. Says, here I am, enter a zone number, so if I was, that's that three, five, zero, one, that's the New Braunfels zone, I type in three, five, zero, one. Park, uh, New Braunfels. Here we go, free parking, oh, right now there's free parking, just told me that for the next ten hours, awesome.
We.
Um, I can, I can have my different vehicles already saved, so, um, here's my old car that I used to have. I click on my car's license plate number. Uh, proceed to checkout. At the, here's your checkout screen, you can make, you can save a credit card, you use Apple Pay or it works on Android, whatever the Google Pay equivalent is. And you just hit start parking.
And Tommy's.
And, and that's it, and on his side, Tommy would have the same Park Mobile app, he'd pull it up, say, all right, who's all the vehicles who are parked within this zone? And you go, you look, you look, you look at this part, you look at this, uh, car's license plate, is it on my list? Nope, ticket, is it, is it on my list? Yep, good.
Okay, and then, and then, how, how is, are you gonna track, like if it's three offenses and, and then they're towed?
So that's one of the policy decisions that Mike or Nick was talking about, um, customer understyler was talking about, was, you know, when, at what point do you wanna tow, that's a policy decision that we can get into with the chief police, do we wanna do it?
Yeah.
First offense, second offense, third offense.
Yeah.
Is there, we wanna have different, um, thresholds based off if you're on the, at nineteen seventy nine, or if you're in the parking, the, the phase one space. We can, we can address, you know, what our towing threshold is.
Yeah.
Do we set it up with a, the wrecking service where they just, they can enforce it on their own? Where they just drive around, say, anybody I see, I can pull them, and it's kinda up to them, then when they come around.
Let me ask you this, uh, real quick.
Yeah.
Not to cut you off, uh, so, who would monitor that if that lot was full? I, I see, cuz it is told you it's free, right?
Right now, right now.
Because that might end up going on in New Braunfels, but if.
Offseason probably.
Yeah, right, so next week when it's busy or whatever, just for whatever reason, it, it'd say we're ten dollars apart.
Hmm.
Who's gonna monitor that when, I, I've seen them a lot, I used to live right across the street right there. So, uh, when they would say lot full, they'd flip up the sign. Who's gonna put that on there to say, you know, cuz someone's gonna be pissed off if they say, hey, you know what, I just paid twenty bucks, and I drove back and forth, I've been driving around for an hour here and there's no, no space.
Well, that's, that's all nothing, you don't pay until you park.
Could we get?
Could that app track?
Okay, if we pull in.
They're, okay, so the app does have an option to do reservations in advance. If there's, there, um, you can pre-reserve space. I've never used that function, but you can do it through their app. The, the tricky part is when we get to phase one and maybe Allen Bates or other places, is how we set up the number of spaces, cuz it's not, every space gets a number, you get so many spaces per zone. I've never been in a position where I, you go to a zoned parking area and you, you kinda have to know where you are parked in order to know the zone. If I went, New Braunfels is a little different cuz it's entire, Comal Park is the zone, um, but I wouldn't pay until I've found a space.
They have a gate shack there that you can't get past, you can't get past that park ranger, because there's a little guard shack there.
Well, I don't, it, that would be up to us to delineate. So, that'd be up to us to delineate the parking spaces, right? If we just said, in this general field, if you can find a place to put your car and park and take the keys with you. As long as you pay, you're fine.
Yeah.
And you could get up with a hundred and twenty people down there, if that's twenty cars down there, if that's not what we want, we gotta say, parking only designated space, you don't park in a designated space, that's what you're doing.
Yeah, it's uncontrollable, so, cuz people are parking this.
I, I, I think we would, it would probably remain uncontrolled unless we wanted to create the infrastructure to control.
I like it, so, I like, I like what I'm hearing. I like it because you got the technology without the, without the expense, so I, I'm just thinking that, that big, that big, we do our trash cleanup, that's a huge place to park, okay? Downtown, this here, and if we could incorporate the technology, you guys are not over inundated with it, I don't know.
Uh, you can, you can do this in stages, you think I wanna do, I wanna do the island, I wanna do the park, I'm, you know, just, and exactly, like you said, different, but different fees for different.
There's different zones.
Just have it one set fee for everybody, for, you know, first cup first.
Well, you might, you might do a zone down here that's on an hourly rate, two dollars fifty cents an hourly, but at a river access point, you're doing a day fee.
Whatever, but you have to say, we could do it universal, you could do it throughout the city, I mean, if you wanted to, there and there.
You.
And, and you have the technology, and if you guys can handle that, if you can do the.
There's no, there's no limit to this, the, the, the Park Mobile Company would help us design those zones.
Oh, that's the way to go.
And, and you could have.
You, you have. Different places, you know what, what I argue about it is, I, I was, I'll be honest, I, I was against that, I was, one time, I didn't want that thing to become a parking lot. With that, when we do our front traction, but if we can control it, you know, like I said, alcohol.
Well, that's a different issue.
But I'm saying, but, 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 no, there's not an issue because, because, pretty much, because if you park your vehicle and your goal is to go to our phase one, you park the vehicle, if you start taking, you know, alcohol, non-disposable containers, you, you cannot do that, there's rules.
Right, but rule, rule enforcement is different than a parking.
Saying is, but, but, but they know the rules though.
Yeah.
They, they would know.
You could, you could put your Park Mobile app zone sign, park rule sign right next to it, and you just have a big.
Exactly, so what, so what, what they find out, oh, I wanna, for example, I, I go down there and I get a big cooler of beer, and I got my roller, and I got my big ice chest, and I go down there and park my car, I pay the twenty bucks, police says, hey, man, we, we got a non-disposable container, we have no alcohol. They're gonna do that one time.
I, I didn't see the sign, well, then you, how'd you park, pay to park?
Yeah.
So they're right there.
What are we gonna do about our restaurants that are gonna sell alcohol?
Well, they'll be drinking here.
No, they can't, yeah, they can't.
They'll be drinking here.
Can't take it to.
No, 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 this is just strictly parking, and, and the people, they, if they have rules at the park, they'll say, well, I'm not gonna spend twenty bucks, I can't drink my beer down there.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be a problem for you, Tommy? I mean, if we have this app, if we get an expert in here, so.
I think it's gonna, I think it will help.
Absolutely, help out, this will help out great, I think we need more signage for the enforcement of the law.
You got it?
I think we need to clean up our, our, uh, city ordinances, uh, littering.
Got it.
And alcohol, no alcohol, and, and.
Got it.
If we're gonna say no alcohol, if we're gonna say no alcohol.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that's up to you guys, not me.
But, but like, like I said, the park system, you know, you put these rules that if you're, if you're a conscientious drinker and you put it in a non-disposable container, and you make yourself young in this one, I, I just, I, I just see, I just see a potential that we can all be together, that we get revenue for the city, and we get parking for downtown, we get parking for.
Mike, I had this next one just for you, buddy.
All right.
If you really wanna generate loads of cash, river access lease agreements, like the Lions Club.
My God. You don't know this story.
I haven't really heard much of that.
My God.
I thought he was gonna get in a fight that night.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Wait a minute, I got that filled, Mike, hold on.
So, so the, the purpose of it, including this slide, is I think there is possibly a legitimate reason for doing something like the fact. If, if you write, by having lease agreements, we have a contractual, uh, we have contractual enforcement over the activities of that business or nonprofit or whoever's operating this thing, where we can set the terms and conditions. It also would be, could be a massive revenue generating, um, enterprise in addition to or in place of parking meters, um, that we can try to achieve policy objectives on keeping the river clean through contractual enforcement on, on that business. And then, um, create opportunities for, for probably tens of thousands of dollars in revenue.
Are you, are you insinuating that Lions Club has reached out to the city?
No, no, I just, I just knew that was a, uh.
I think they know there's a road to walk right here.
Wait a minute, now, wait a minute, now, New Braunfels has got their act together.
They do.
And they're.
Better than San Marcos.
I mean, have you been in, have you been in New Braunfels rivers? Way worse than San Marcos rivers.
For sure.
Trap is horrible.
Now, Colbell, I'm with the Colbell.
Of all of them.
I've heard it's clean.
You know, I, I.
I don't know.
As, it's.
One other question.
It's, it's.
No, come on in, do you have a question?
I'm just looking for the drop box for this location.
No, it's right on the other side of the side.
Okay, sorry, thanks, man.
Um. So, if, if you can create contractual agreements to enforce, um, certain things, there, there's, there'll be a market for it. Now, do I know where they're gonna get in, where they're gonna get out, whether there would be someone to take us up on it? I don't know, but it, really the only place to get in is probably phase one. Um, unless they substantially converted, um, the public road underneath the, uh, waterfalls. Um, which I don't see that happening, but the.
You mean the low, low water crossing?
The low water crossing, the, the other.
I wanna talk about.
Wait, she, you're not what it is that.
You're in my territory, that's my backyard, it's where my mom lives.
Or, or you do this at, at phase one as a, as a get in point, we, it's what it, we wouldn't have a get out, which could, could be nice because we, you could, you could, you could run this, uh.
They were way, way ahead of us.
Run, run this like the Texas State tubes.
Oh, my gosh.
Where, where you're, 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 you're parking somewhere else and you're getting shuttled to your, or I guess it would be Dawn's. You're parking at your get out and you're, you're dropping in, and so we can take, they, they take the, the parking spaces.
Uh, we don't.
Put it downriver.
Mike.
You're, you're, you're throwing away, you're throwing away tens of thousands of dollars.
How about canoe, how about canoeers, kayakers, fishermen?
Sure, you can make it canoe only.
Let's do, let's do that.
May, maybe, maybe someone who wants to compete with Spencer's or, is it Spencer's?
Canoeing, kayaking, fishing would be.
And, and so you could, you could, you could create that contract relationship where you say, no tubes.
Yeah.
But if you wanna be a kayak outfitter and you can create a contract with the city, modify the, that riverbank a little bit and create a business up, and you're probably developing less cash in that way.
So if you think about, and I, I hadn't think about, I, I haven't thought about this before we talked about today, but keeping it G rated, have you floated in San Marcos, like in San Marcos? It's pretty G rated, there's not a lot of mishap going on there in, in the city of San Marcos, from Lions Club down to the.
The Lions Club, you're talking about the Lions, you know, the Lions Club track is, I've done it many times, my daughter worked for them, that's G rated.
It's G.
Go past that.
Yes, but why, why is that G rated?
I'll tell you why, I'll tell you exactly why.
Cuz they're in a city.
No, I'll tell you exactly why, I knew the guy that was the manager of the Lions Club, and when he was there and he saw a drunk, a drunk coming up, he said, you don't wanna come here, you need to go to Dawn's in Texas State too, here's a, here's a map.
But also there's four wheelers up and down that area in the corridor.
Where?
In San Marcos, and they're constantly patrolling that area.
Yeah.
And that, that's, that's how you keep it G rated, no tolerance.
And, and, and we can do that, here, we just need to be able to.
They have, have the jurisdiction. So that's why places, I've been in that, I spearfished that up and down that river, and I have seen a handful of trash come out of the river, and I mean, they have contracts with guys who go in there and they're spearfishing.
Go past, go past.
Oh, I know, I'm getting there, I'm getting there, once you pass that though, totally different.
And, and another thing, you know, I've done river cleanups for forty years, the problem with, with trash, it cans, it goes to the big deep bays, and you can't see them, and what happens when you have a major flood, then you see the cans coming, they race the bottom and they come all downstream to us. You go down there and spew the sand or scans all in the river. Again, go ahead.
So my question is, is, is I like, I like your, your not-for-profit people trying to come out and do something, right? We, we got till Easter, really, let's, let's look at it, cuz Easter's gonna start getting busy here.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so we need to make a decision, then get our, our, our ordinances set up in place so we can start enforcing something.
And get revenue, we need revenue.
If we can get some not-for-profits to come down there and manage these things, and they make a little bit of money off of it, we make a little bit of money off of it, then we can grow this thing for, for the future.
Yeah.
And then come back in next year when we got a little bit more time, but we're talking, our backs against the wall, we got two months basically.
What, what about, what about, what about the technology with, with the app? What about that tech, could we get, could we implement that now?
That was probably pretty quick, probably ten ninety nine.
I think we're way, I think we need to go with that.
This, this, this is, again, we're brainstorming possible revenue generating enterprises, one of the things that's, that's, that's not. Possible revenue generating enterprises. One of the things that's, that's, that's not. Having addressed that is our active way of, of creating revenue. Uh, but.
But I, I like the idea of that, of having parking pay parking. And I think we can make a lot of revenue, cause you know, there's just limited.
We wanna do a river access lease to kayaks and boaters.
I have no problem with that at all. I mean, I mean, do, do, do we?
I, 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 I have a kayak or a, basically a supyak. I'd love to get it on the river, but it's a pain in the butt to, to load that thing around. I'd pay somebody twenty bucks. Drop in, I'm not looking to tube on it, but.
But you can pick it up and. You could, you know.
They, you would likely park at your get out. And we, they would have a lease agreement with the city.
Yeah.
Um, that allow them to, to drop, to drop us, to, to trail our, take, take our kayak. Truck it up to phase one, drop it in and then.
How about this? Lease agreement with Mr. and Mrs. Michelle over there. They, they come and pick you up. You leave your car here and you can roll all the way down to the phase one and that's it.
We'll, we'll probably have to look at.
I'm a pattern. How about this? How about this? How, how about this? You pay, you pay.
Kill yourself.
Like they used to do, you pay the fee. And then you have, you can, you can drop your kayak, say at phase one, you got your car, you got your boat, you go to phase one, you drop your canoe off. Then you go park your car and then you get your kayak and you go downstream. So the, the parking fee would cut to the cost, okay?
So maybe, maybe what we do is require the operator to utilize our phase three. Triangle by Southeast River Road, that becomes the parking spot and then the outfitters basically providing the shuttle service. Um, helping people get safely, get their, uh, watercraft to the river. And then transporting them from their get out back to their vehicle, which is paying for a city park.
Yeah.
Parking spot.
Does anyone come to the city with regard to this? Yeah?
No, but the business is there.
Yeah.
It, it's, if, uh.
I mean.
I think Mike might have a get out point. If Mike wanted to create, you know, Mike's, Mike's.
Too small of your van.
Yeah, but any, any, any property.
I have a place too. Yeah, right, right across from Spencer's.
Yeah, so, you know. That's, that's a real short flight.
Can we just? I, I, I like, I like the app. I think this goes with the app. I think the apps is our, is our.
Go next.
Short, short term.
So other options, um, park entry fees, like they do for, um, Jacob's Well or, um. What's the other one? The one in Travis County, um, Hamilton Pool, um, you know. Really? Where, where you create a guard shack, you pay, you pay, you pay an employee to sit at the shack and collect fees coming in. That's another option. The benefit of doing this would be that employee taking the fees could also go around, pick up the trash.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a much more, much more expensive on the city to set that up, cause basically the city's creating a business. Like entity and that, that, there's some risk involved.
Parking, if you do have parking. There is some risk involved, but really, look at Barton Springs. Yeah. I mean, they make a lot of money.
You know what? It, it, the whole thing I like about this app, and we can do it now. So this, this call, future, but we got that, you get that app and that technology. You can interface with it, but we're getting revenue.
Alright, when is our next city council meeting?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
So I think, I think we need to adjourn the meeting, but I'm, I'm happy to continue presenting the slides.
Okay.
I gotta get going soon, but I like, I like the. The app is, I think that's where it's at.
Look at the numbers, just look at this.
Can I say something about the.
Sixteen.
Yeah.
So, have y'all been to the gorge at Canyon Lake? So composite restrooms, composite toilets?
Oh, really?
Like a silver panel? And they're out there and you're sort of self-cleaning the way they work.
Really?
And I think when you, the initial cost, I would be a bunch of group pay anywhere.
That's probably a good point.
Are they, would they be okay in a, in the flood zone?
Well, it depends on size of the structure. You have to check the, the size of that.
I'm willing to make that a parking lot, we do our crap. I mean, the amount of people coming here in central Texas. I mean, you think, you're coming from Houston, a lot of people do, they come, I'm gonna pay twenty bucks a day or I'll go back to Houston, I'll pay them twenty bucks.
So this is another check on reality, Sam was getting to this. Um, our previous budget's about nineteen thousand dollars. Our, our basic cost just to do minimal. Minimal maintenance is just about nineteen thousand dollars a year. We've upped our budget to, to twenty-five this next year. Um, advisory board looked at what they might wanna do, maybe, I think the playground mulch might have been taken care of to some extent. I don't know if it's gonna be the full three thousand anymore, um, if at all, but.
No, we spent less.
Yeah.
But we spread it volunteers.
Yeah, the, and then looking at lights, new grills. Is what we're looking at. So when we're getting. To revenue and these other things we wanna do. Almost anything additional than what we're doing today is gonna require more revenue generating. Um, so there's, I know when we went through the parks planning process, um. Fortunately, I was talking with Adrian. The sample size that we got in response is, is, is lacking for us to really make any. Generic inferences on what the public wants out of its parks. Um, I think we had twenty to thirty people total.
No, that is more. It was about almost sixty, fifty.
So, so some of it, some of the, the critical features were people didn't want this to become a. Revenue generating area, um, or at least where they'd be forced to pay.
Already, I mean, the problem is they're already coming.
So the question, the, the question is, oh, we have to solve for the people who submitted that, the surveys and things. And from a policy perspective, will, will likely want to look at creating those local passes for free.
Exactly.
And, and, and charging out of, out of city.
And, and this is how you push it to the citizens. I mean, we, most of the people in the summer come on the weekend, do not live here. If we can get parking fees from them, then we can improve the parks. We have extra money to improve them for our, for our locals, you know? So it's a, I mean, we, the problem is there's just no access to them. I mean, we've got, we've got the jewel right here, we've got the thing right here. Sam, you think about it, San Marcos is a park. You go between San Marcos and Luling, we're the only place left. We're the only place on the river. Exactly, and the county has none.
Well, they're other places, but they're paying.
But they're paying, but they're a bridge, but I'm saying, and we, and we're also, we're, we're ten miles from the headwaters. The water temperature's seventy-five degrees, it's crystal clear. We've got the, one of the nicest places there. So let's. Let's do the park, the app. I'm, I'm all for it. How you guys feel? I think that's a brilliant, brilliant way to go.
I address Tommy's point.
I have thought, I wanted to share. If, if there's, you know, we're learning that, that grants are often attached to educational. Uh, experience. There, there's a lot of, of, like, you could, you could have a. A lecture or some, I'm not sure how you put it together, but there's a lot for kids to learn about nature down there. And I, I don't, I don't.
So that would be, um, park programming, like you would get from a, you know, park ranger kinda thing.
Can you make money from that?
No.
Okay.
No, we can use money from it, but.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you, you likely wouldn't be a market.
Okay.
For charging to participate in something like that, unless it's like an overnight camp or safari type excursion. Where, where it's kinda like what maybe a Boy Scouts would do. And we'd have a, a river guide kayak with the kids, you know.
Right.
Or a day, maybe an overnight camping. And then continue on and they get kind of like a weekend experience out of it. Maybe you could charge, you know, two hundred something dollars for, for something like that, but.
It's not good.
I think, so they, I, I love that app, that's, that's it. And we, the good news is, we can do that now. We could get this thing rolling for the summer and we could get income coming.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
I'm willing to open up that bottom land over there for parking. I mean, it's a little of a hat, Tommy's at a problem, they keep walking across that seventy-nine, that's the only.
Yeah.
That's the one issue I see a problem. There is a, there is a crosswalk there, if you go up and.
Crosswalk on this end where Alan Bates is, but there's not a.
The, can we, can we, can we get with Tech Stop, maybe go across the walk there somewhere?
The, the other map that I sent you and I, I don't know.
Oh, you sent me a map.
It was. Open your power points.
Does this thing bubble to you?
So. So Mike, Mike, I, I do wanna point out, so the, these are the different areas, if you can move our little, uh, video monitors.
Sorry.
Talk to the names. So phase three is in yellow.
Yeah.
South of phase three is Mr. Clinton's property. However, it's bisected by. A, a little stretch of land that's, that's under the deed of the state of Texas. So.
Which piece? The, the blue piece?
No.
Where's your book?
If you need a laser pointer.
This, this little bit of land, uh, is owned by the state.
Thanks, yeah.
You can see it's probably a, an artifact of the.
I sold that to the state.
Yeah, alright, so that's owned by the state. Um, the only way, and this is kinda uphill, so if you're coming down from the triangle, you're walking uphill to downhill. But I will, if you could potentially. Get around this, this crosswalk issue by having parking maybe up on the top of the hill and a walking path. Through, through the state.
Beneath the bridge.
And go on the other side of the bridge. That's probably the only way that, that phase three area. Becomes a, a suitable parking space or use, but it would, it would create some. We'd have to invest, create some investments to flatten out that area up there. And to create a space, it probably costs us ten, fifteen thousand dollars to do it.
So.
Um.
And then you'd have to either get a, you'd either have to buy that little triangle from me or you would have to have a easement of, of sorts. Where I, you would, I would relinquish liability.
Or get it from the state. I think there, I think there's a tiny, any, any little sliver. Here.
Yeah, it's on both sides.
Um, I think that might be a continuation of there. So this is, this is.
Yeah.
Sam's here and here. Um. That, that spot.
You got a corner.
They imminent domain, the road through that property?
Question for you, Tom.
Yeah. And they did take the triangle.
Here's the.
Before. Pedestrians from you as well.
I mean, that's, that's.
There's no, uh, cross, there's no.
I know, I know, but, but you do have a good visi- visual. I mean, you could see way up and way down, so being for as a visual point. And you can, you could see a, a long way and it is not that, it's not that busy, so, I mean. What I would see is a, you don't wanna do it too close to that curve, but have it in here somewhere.
You can do it there. I, I would. I mean, you could put, paint a crosswalk down there, ask Tech Stop too. Or the county.
I wouldn't want anybody walking across that.
I don't think you're gonna put one there. I think it'd be just like a free fall. Okay, you cross where you can and you cross, cross where it's safe.
The safest place to be would be to go beneath the bridge. I actually, as they're saying, to walk along the easement of Tech Stop. Go beneath the bridge and then enter the park there. So Tommy, who, where would be, where would be the best place?
They're really just getting access and then, I don't know.
How much revenue it generates and. How much of a hard bargain we can.
So my que- I guess my question, so is it viable at this point to, to go ahead and make this a parking lot? For the, for our, for our Alan Bates, for.
Probably not, probably not up to that, that space. You're probably down on the hilltop at seven or two seven eight nine two.
Right here.
Right in there, that's probably where it becomes feasible.
Yeah, I would personally be, I would, this, this, let's work with the two we got right now and then if we gotta expand, let's talk about expansion another time.
Okay. Good enough.
I would, I would just work with the two we got. We got phase one, we got Alan Bates and we got.
And we, we working on the other, so. So, so what I like about that app, we could do that right now. We can start that, we can get it going before the summer. We can get that going and get, and get some revenue. And if, if, if you can interface with, that's, I, I like it. The, we're not San Marcos, we don't have that kinda money. What do you think?
What, what across, what about going across nine, nineteen seventy-nine though, if we did have a flashing. Pedestrian crossing light there in, in.
That's Tech Stop, isn't it?
We don't have the control of that, nothing is dangerous.
Okay.
Well, we're having a hard, they're, they're slowing down more now.
That you're patrolling. Okay, so you're right, let's, let's, let's just go ahead, we're way ahead of ourselves. Let's incorporate this app on our existing parks right now and start that process.
And then we can.
Yeah.
People's not, not wanting to pay to park and they're parking across here, then we can come back and say, hey, now, we got twenty cars parking across the street for free.
Cause, because if you, now, this is another problem, but if you think about long-term downtown parking, if this town. Which we all think's gonna go, that could be parking, but then you got other safety issues of if you're going to downtown, you gotta walk on nineteen seventy-nine. So, but that's something that we could.
I think we, we do the Park Mobile, this is outside the bounds of, well, we're not in public meaning where we're basically adjourned to it on the quorum, but. Do that same Park Mobile downtown.
Yeah.
All, all the way from Alan Bates Park to the old schoolhouse.
Got it.
And that becomes hourly.
I got, I, that could, we could do the same, man.
Yeah. That's nothing, that's nothing that needs to be done.
Wait, how, how would you distinguish between the revenue?
We'll see how the summer goes.
But, but the Park Mobile is right, we could do that now. We could do, what, what do you think? Real couple of months, we can incorporate that? What do you think, Tommy? Park Mobile, that, we could do it all for all downtown and that way. Mari's got places for his people, they can park and we get revenue.
Are doing Park Mobile and permits for residents?
How do we differentiate?
Are doing Park Mobile and permits for residents?
Park Mobile.
I think we should be free.
No, well, I would want some of the money, no, it wouldn't, because we want some of the money that we're generating from people going to the park to go into the park.
Oh yeah, that's, that's, that's part of the, that's part of the, that's, that's, that's gonna be part of the budgetary process. Yeah, I mean, you could, uh, city council can, they likely would continue to do that, you can. If you wanna create some permanence around it, you can write it into an ordinance regarding, cause we'll have to have an ordinance. Enforcing this sort of thing that gets written along with it. You could say, you know. There's many proceeds, a hundred percent of proceeds go to the park maintenance. You know, but ten years down the line, if Houston Council wanna change that ordinance, it could, so. It, 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 it's, doesn't make it, makes it slightly inconvenient for them to, to change that thing, but. They could anytime they wanted. It, to me. You, you would handle it through your budgeting process.
But it seems, seems like from what you said, if the New Braunfels code was three five oh one for the park, that we could differentiate.
Maybe, I think, because what we're probably gonna do is just get a check from the company.
Yes, exactly. You're right, okay, you're right.
But if, if it's different zone, they might be able to give you, this is a check for this zone.